Buen día, todos. ¿Pueden escucharme? Buen día. Buen día. Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Es una casa repleta en el Comité de Salud, Salud, Energía y Derechos de los Trabajadores. Hoy vamos a llevar al comité a la orden. Es exactamente las 9:30. Estamos justo en el tiempo. Es el jueves 11 de julio de 2019. Y este es un especial Comité de Salud, Energía y Derechos de los Trabajadores. Soy Teresa Mosqueta, presidenta del comité. Y pronto me acompañarán miembros adicionales del consejo. Y les presentaremos cuando lleguen. También quiero señalar que yo hablo muy rápido. Y voy a tratar de detenerlo. Tenemos a ambos que están aquí, que están proporcionando traducción. Vamos a ver, tenemos a Jordan Guffey y a Molly McGuire, que proporcionarán interpretación. Y Libby Stanley, directora de la ED de las Servicios de Advocación de las Abusas y las Mujeres, estará atendiendo la reunión y ha solicitado servicios de idioma de signo americano. Así que queremos asegurarnos de que sea una reunión inclusiva. Y si necesito recordar, Faride, por favor, recuerde que se puede detener un poco. Si todos pueden recordar que hacen lo mismo cuando ambos están hablando en la mesa y testificando, eso sería genial. Así que tenemos muchos temas en nuestra agenda. Tenemos seis temas en la agenda hoy. El primero es la última cita a la Junta de Estándares de Trabajadores Domésticos. Tenemos un breve informe sobre la noticia de la legislación de intento de vender. Tenemos dos piezas de la legislación de los trabajadores de hoteles, que se relacionan con las secciones de retención y cargamento de trabajo. Quiero recordarles que no hay votación en eso. Hemos extendido la conversación en eso también. Tendremos otra reunión sobre los otros dos piezas de la legislación la próxima semana. Tendremos un breve informe y posible voto sobre el asunto del salario de proveedor, que es el proyecto de ajuste inflacionario de los servicios humanos. Este es el único proyecto que potencialmente tendremos un voto hoy. Solo quiero recordarles eso. Si han venido a testificar sobre algo más, no va a haber un voto en el comité sobre eso. Solo la potencial legislación de ajuste inflacionario de los servicios humanos. Y finalmente, para cerrar esto, tendremos una presentación del Office de Estándares de Labor en la Ruta y la Iniciativa de Justicia Social. Estamos programados para llegar a las 20:00 de la mañana hoy. Y si no hay objeciones, y no hay, la agenda será adoptada. A esta hora vamos a tomar comentarios públicos. Y debido al alto volumen de gente que se ha firmado para testificar, iba a hacer un minuto de testimonio público. ¿Por qué no hacemos un minuto y medio? Y luego tenemos a una persona, que es el primer tema de nuestra agenda, que necesita ir a las 10:30. Si parece que vamos a llegar un poco tarde, podemos tomar una pausa para hacer esa cita. Así que las primeras personas, y voy a leer tres nombres en orden. Si pudieran venir y formar parte de los micrófonos, eso sería genial. La primera persona que está aquí es Deanne Swanley, de Hilton. Jurgen Oswald, y luego Anne Vandem. Y como siempre, por favor, sepan corregir mi pronunciación. Buen día. No creo que sea... démosle uno segundo. Está bien, adelante. ¿Hola?
Sí.
Gracias. Buen día, mi nombre es Deanne Shawley. Soy la gerente de la HR en el Hilton Seattle. He trabajado en la industria de la hospitalidad toda mi vida. Empecé mi carrera en 1985 como camarera de habitación. Y he trabajado hasta donde estoy ahora. Puedo decir que a todos en esta sala le importa mucho la seguridad de los asistentes y proporciona no solo entrenamiento de seguridad para ellos, sino también el botón de pánico, que requieren todos los hoteles de Seattle. Espero que podamos decir que todos mis asistentes usan, pero a veces no, por su propia decisión. Aunque somos propiedad de un sindicato y nuestros asistentes tienen buena seguridad de nivel, a un coste muy bajo de $40 por mes para toda su familia, las excesivas gastos adicionales de nuestros asistentes no sindicatos, de información tomada del intercambio, que se ríe de no negociarse ni ser precisa por el costo de la seguridad de nivel de oro, es injusto para nuestra industria. Continúe. Los requisitos de tiempo de trabajo propuestos son irrazonables si un asistente excede el carga de trabajo obligatorio por un cuadrado cuadrado, que requiere que paguemos el tiempo de trabajo durante las horas trabajadas ese día. No existe otra industria que ni yo ni nadie más sabe que paga el tiempo de trabajo durante las horas trabajadas. Pasando esta legislación, estás debilitando la industria de la hospitalidad, especialmente nuestros pequeños negocios. Gracias. Gracias. Jurgen, seguido de Anne Vandem.
Buenos días, miembros del consejo. Jurgen Oswald, trabajo en el Hilton. Y nuestros equipos realmente aprecian que se unan aquí en el Consejo de la Ciudad. Quieren gestionar nuestros hoteles, pero gracias, pero no gracias, y aquí es por qué. The Fortune Magazine lista una lista de las mejores 100 empresas para trabajar. En 2019, Hilton fue la primera empresa de hospitalidad que fue la mejor empresa para trabajar en los Estados Unidos. Pero además de Hilton, había varias otras empresas de hospitalidad. Kimpton fue el número cinco, The Cheesecake Factory, el número 25, Marriott, el número 31, Hyatt, 32, Four Seasons, 89. Algunas de las otras 10 empresas top, empresas conocidas, Salesforce, Workday, Cisco, Edward Jones, algunas de las empresas de Washington State, listadas entre el ranking 46 a 74, REI, Slalom, T-Mobile, Zillow, Perkins Coie. Yo cité, según el Instituto de la Gran Plazas de Trabajo, Hilton superancia cuando se trata de satisfacción entre trabajadores de nivel más desfranchizado, como los de limpieza y personal de cocina. Así que parece que somos un empleador de elección. Y parece que somos ciertamente capaces de dirigir nuestros hoteles sin la influencia de otros outsiders, especialmente los sindicatos que representan una serie de hoteles en Seattle de más de 100 hoteles.
Gracias.
Gracias.
La siguiente es Anna Vandem. Lo siento, Anna, estoy segura de que no estoy diciendo tu nombre final correcto. Amanda Parsons, Shannon Sharon y Sean O'Rourke.
Hola, soy Anne Vanderheijt, la directora de ventas y marketing en el Hilton Seattle. He trabajado en la industria de la hospitalidad durante 35 años. He estado en posiciones horarias, así como en gestión. Como casi todos los que he trabajado en hoteles, he trabajado hasta arriba. En el Hilton Seattle, nuestro equipo de gestión es un compuesto de diversidad, género, etnica y LGBT. No somos únicos. Estoy aquí para decirles que creo que aún hay trabajo de casa que debe hacerse. Y ustedes tienen la responsabilidad de entender más sobre los hoteles y nuestra relación con la comunidad y con esta legislación. Por ejemplo, las empresas de hoteles proporcionan entrenamiento obligatorio de diversidad, respeto en el lugar de trabajo y el abuso de la salud. Las empresas de hoteles proporcionan entrenamiento obligatorio sobre trabajar con seguridad. ¿Sabían que los hoteles no son propiedad de las marcas? Con pocas excepciones, aunque muchos hoteles son propiedad de compañías de gestión de propietarios o Trusts de Inversión Real, la gran mayoría de los hoteles allá afuera son propiedad familiar y rentada a familia, solo pagando para dirigir una flagra particular. ¿Sabían que los hoteles ya ofrecen a sus miembros premium de seguro en costos significativamente más bajos y se puede obtener en el intercambio? Y que nuestros planes de compensación de los trabajadores cubren los daños en el trabajo. La legislación del botón de pánico fue una verdadera victoria para todos. Pero ayer, cuando caminé a trabajar, me golpeó literalmente por un hombre desordenado que me tiró una gran botella de líquido, me golpeó de lado y me dolió. Supongo que había alguna consolación en su palo diciéndome que probablemente no fuera el urtero porque no smellaba. Pero considerando las recientes incidentes en el centro de la ciudad esta semana, es solo cuestión de tiempo que la gente dejará de venir a Seattle downtown. Las empresas se moverán a lugares más bonitos, las convenciones van a ciudades que son más seguras, los barcos de crucero van a dockar de Vancouver. Cuando eso suceda y los miles de millones de dólares se van, toda la discusión de los costos de la atención médica será inútil. Sin viajeros, no hay horas. Sin horas, no hay beneficios.
Nosotros tenemos a Amanda Parsons, Shannon Sharon, Sean O'Rourke. Y realmente disculpo, chicos. Esperaba que pudieramos hacer un minuto y 30 segundos. Creo que vamos a tener que hacer un minuto después de esto, ya que ustedes no tenían un segundo para editar sus comentarios. Adelante y tomen un minuto y medio. Y si los chicos pudieran ver sus comentarios, de esa manera podemos entrar todos y hacer nuestro negocio hoy también.
Gracias.
Lo siento por eso.
Está bien. Buen día, mi nombre es Amanda Parsons. Estoy con el Hotel Thompson. Quería tomar un momento y decirles gracias por escuchar nuestras preocupaciones, que los gastos en la legislación exceden mucho lo que realmente cuesta proporcionar un cuidado de calidad a nuestros empleados. Espero que mantenerlo de acuerdo con la agenda de hoy significa que estás pasando el tiempo correcto y el tiempo correcto para hacerlo bien. Esto requiere pensamiento cuidado. Hasta ahora, la discusión aquí en la Cámara de Ciudad y en las noticias se centra en los empleados de los hoteles. Y eso no es solo lo que esta legislación es sobre. También se trata de los negocios que acabe de alquilar espacio en hoteles y afectan a pequeños negocios y empleados no de hoteles. ¿Por qué tratas un negocio que alquila espacio en un hotel diferente de un negocio que alquila espacio en un edificio de oficina o un edificio de departamento? Cuando estamos tomando decisiones para nuestros ciudadanos, necesitamos considerar todo. Y espero que continúen tomando un largo y duro vistazo a esto. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Lo aprecio. Shannon, seguido de Sean O'Rourke, y luego hay un grupo de SEIU 1199. Hola.
Hola. Buen día, mi nombre es Shannon Sharon, y estoy aquí representando y discutiendo el asunto del hotel. He testificado durante los últimos tres años muchas veces y continúo buscando y esperando el equilibrio. Hay muchas consecuencias inattendidas que se han incluído en esta legislación que continuamos a pedir comprensión y tenemos grandes preocupaciones. Esto es sobre asegurar que representamos y entendemos las necesidades de los trabajadores de los hoteles, de las que tenemos gran comprensión y experiencia, así como comprender las consecuencias inattendidas y el peso pesado que esto pone en pequeños y grandes negocios. Uno de los temas que no se incluyó en la discusión hoy fue el tema que se refiere a la atención médica. Y ese es un área en la que te agradecemos por detenerse y dar consideración adicional. El número que fue arbitrariamente considerado y creado simplemente no es consistente con lo que las empresas de hoteles pueden pagar o los costos asociados. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Sean O'Rourke, seguido de la SEIU, y luego Gordon McHenry Jr. Faride, ¿puede hacer un pequeño beep al final del tiempo? Está bien, gracias.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Sean O'Rourke, presidente de la Asociación de Hoteles de Seattle. He trabajado en esta industria durante 34 años, comenzando como conductor de shuttle de hoteles, varias posiciones, comida y bebida, casa, jefe de frente, a través de mi carrera de 34 años, hasta ahora, que soy el gerente general en el Mar del Marial de Seattle. Me gustaría decir que cada hotel es diferente y cada enfoque adaptado a las necesidades de los empleados y características únicas de la propiedad. Mientras que esta legislación es desafiante en que se aplica un enfoque de uno tamaño que se adapta a todas, en una situación sin solución singular, estamos comprometidos en asegurar que tenemos cargamentos de trabajo seguros para nuestros empleados y que ellos o soliciten o consentan voluntariamente cualquier asignación de limpieza adicional y sean pagados adecuadamente por hacerlo. Me gustaría pedirles que tengan un vistazo más cerca de los requisitos de pago de tiempo de limpieza adicional. Estamos contentos de pagar el tiempo de trabajo, pero es sin precedentes pedir a una industria que pague el tiempo de trabajo durante toda la hora de trabajo. Esta legislación requiere tiempo de trabajo para todas las horas de trabajo si el empleado excede el cargo obligatorio mínimo de carga de trabajo por un cuadrado cuadrado.
Gracias, Sean. SEIU 1199, seguido de Gordon McHenry, seguido de Katie Garro, y luego de Dan Malone. Bienvenidos. Y debido a que son un grupo, hararemos tres minutos en total si hay gente que está hablando.
Está bien. Mi nombre es Justin. Soy gerente de caso de vivienda en DESC y un orgulloso miembro de SEIU 1199 Northwest. Creo que hago trabajo crucial para mantener la ciudad viva y alquilando a nuestros vecinos más vulnerables. Y me gustaría pasar ahora a mis camaradas de SEIU 1199 Northwest para hablar de por qué solemos apoyar este ajuste para la inflación.
Gracias.
Mi nombre es Bethany Simpson. Trabajo en la Clínica Psiquiátrica de la Comunidad como consejera residente, y soy un orgulloso miembro de SEIU 1199 Northwest. La clínica psiquiátrica de la comunidad no utiliza mucho financiamiento de la ciudad, pero trabajamos con otros proveedores que lo hacen. En mi trabajo trabajamos con servicios de vivienda para ayudar a nuestros clientes a transitar a niveles más bajos de atención. El 90% de mis residentes depende de la salud de los vecinos de su atención primaria. Y muchos de ellos utilizan otros servicios de terapia y centros de comunidad, todo tipo de servicios vitales que los ayudan a prosperar y triunfar en su recuperación. La falta de financiamiento ha impactado a mis coestadounidenses, a mí misma y a nuestros clientes. Durante los cinco años en que he trabajado en CPC, he visto a la gente salir. He visto a los clientes caer de servicios y he visto a la gente morir por falta de acceso a la atención. Así que el hecho de que el financiamiento no sigue la velocidad con la inflación no es solo injusto, es inmoral y inhumano.
Hola, mi nombre es Natalie DeJarvis, y soy especialista en apoyo clínico en DESC de Kerner Scott House. El trabajo que hacemos trae a la gente directamente de las calles y hacia un entorno estable, lo que directamente relaja una gran carga sobre el sistema de servicios de emergencia. Y además, relaja muchas de las reclamaciones que sus constituidores tienen sobre los inmigrantes. Pero esto requiere un personal estable para desarrollar el tipo de confianza y apoyo que es necesario para desarrollar conexiones con personas que son justamente desconfiantes del sistema. Por lo tanto, los trabajadores de salud y servicios humanos necesitan un ajuste anual automático del coste de vida cada año. Gracias.
Gracias.
Mi nombre es Howard Best. Trabajo en DESC también. Creo que el huésped que hemos hecho es bastante claro para todos y el trabajo que hacemos. Y creo en mi corazón que el aumento del coste de vida no es como un privilegio, es un derecho y parece ser lo correcto de hacer. Y nos gustaría ser los que sean y no los que sean. Gracias por su tiempo.
Gracias. ¿Alguien más? Está bien, muy bien, muchas gracias, SEIU. Bienvenidos, Gordon. Katie, seguido de Dan Malone, y luego Denise Perez-Lali.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Gordon McHenry Jr. Soy presidente y CEO de Solid Ground. Comenzamos con la creencia de que la pobreza es solvable, lo que es necesario para ayudar a toda nuestra comunidad a alcanzar su potencial máximo. Nuestro enfoque combina servicios humanos que satisfacen las necesidades básicas. Nuegamos el éxito con la advocacy y difundimos el cambio. Trabajamos con más de 75,000 personas cada año, y nuestra capacidad de dar resultados positivos para nuestros vecinos está fundada en la efectividad de nuestro personal inteligente, capacitado y dedicado. Muchos de nuestros equipos han estado en Solid Ground o en el campo de los servicios humanos durante años y algunos durante décadas. Pedimos a mucha nuestra personal todos los días, y todos los días lo entregan. Necesitamos invertir en infraestructura en la zona de Seattle, y necesitamos invertir en la gente que proporciona servicios humanos. aspiramos a la justicia social, como hace la ciudad de Seattle. Esto es cuestión de equidad y justicia. Por favor, actúen ahora y aproben y confirmen el proyecto de consejo 119542. Gracias.
Gracias, y gracias por todo lo que hacen en Solid Ground.
Gracias.
Hola, buenos días, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Katie Garro. Soy la directora de MLK Labor. Representamos a 100,000 trabajadores sindicados aquí en King County y 150 sindicatos afiliados. También soy miembro de Laborers Local 242, una Unión de Traders de Edificio. Una de las cosas que quiero compartir esta mañana es que en el movimiento de la labor estamos muy familiarizados con el concepto de construir poder. Eso es lo que hacemos. Construimos poder para los trabajadores y familias trabajadoras. Y lo que amo sobre lo que SEIU 1199 y OPEIU Local 8 están haciendo con esta legislación es que están construyendo poder para sí mismos y para sus clientes. Están usando el vehículo del sindicato para elevar la situación y los recursos para sus clientes. Y creo que nosotros en el movimiento de la labor podemos aprender mucho sobre cómo servir mejor nuestra comunidad con el vehículo del sindicato, desde el trabajo que ustedes todos están haciendo. Así que muchas gracias por estar hoy. También quiero afirmar para el consejo que pasamos una resolución en el consejo de labor, apoyando esta legislación. Y me gustaría leer un extracto rápido. La capacidad de Seattle para prosperar ahora y en el futuro depende de nuestra capacidad de fomentar la salud económica, emocional, física, desarrollo y bienestar social para todos nuestros miembros de la comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias, Katie.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Daniel Malone. Soy director ejecutivo de DESC, Centro de Emergencia de Servicio de Emergencia. DESC es orgulloso de contratar con la ciudad de Seattle para proporcionar servicios vitales para los más vulnerables miembros de la comunidad que tenemos. Y hacemos esto al contratar profesionales dedicados con las habilidades necesarias para hacer este vital trabajo de servicio público. Partnerizamos con la ciudad para abrir cosas como Clement Place, el nuevo programa de apoyo de vivienda para las personas de hogar crónicos en la comunidad, que el miembro consejo Juarez graciosamente nos ayudó a abrir hace unos meses. El costo de hacer negocios, sin embargo, continúa aumentando, y necesitamos los recursos para no perder el terreno para poder proporcionar estos servicios vitales en la comunidad. Así que cuando perdemos el terreno, tenemos que considerar cortar esos servicios vitales, y esa es la última cosa que cualquiera en la comunidad necesita. Así que os expongo a votar sí en este proyecto y aseguremos que podemos prosperar. Gracias.
Gracias, Dan, y gracias por todo su trabajo. Hola, bienvenidos, Denise. Seguido de Denise, estará Chan Folitan, Claire Persley, y luego Bill Hallerman.
Buenos días.
Buenos días. ¿Ustedes tienen un grupo o solo vos hablás?
Solo yo, gracias.
Okay, pues vamos a empezar tu tiempo de nuevo.
Gracias, soy Denise Perez-Lali, y tengo la honra de trabajar en El Centro de la Raza. Durante más de 45 años, nuestra organización ha estado trabajando para servir a la comunidad latina, así como comunidades de color aquí en Seattle. La ciudad de Seattle reconoce que nosotros y otros en la sala hoy como organizaciones basadas en la comunidad somos expertos que directamente invierten en poblaciones vulnerables y, por lo tanto, contratamos a nosotros para proporcionar servicios humanos a su honor. Sin embargo, el aumento en el coste de vida y los gastos generales de operación de proporcionar servicios superan el porcentaje de inflación. Al principio del nuevo año, los empleados reciben un aumento del 3% en el coste de vida. El financiamiento de la ciudad no cubre este costo, y al no hacerlo, en última instancia afecta a quienes pueden y no pueden permitirse trabajar para una empresa no lucrativa y posiblemente vivir en Seattle. Te estamos pidiendo que incluya un ajuste anual a todos los contratos de HSD para mantener la velocidad con la inflación. Gracias.
Gracias a todos en El Centro. ¿Estás hablando como un grupo o solo una persona? Está bien, gracias por estar aquí, Senior Center de South Park.
Buenos días, miembros del consejo. Buenos días, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Chan Folitan. Soy inmigrante de Cambodia. Participé con el cohorte combatiano en el Senior Center de South Park. Le pido a ustedes asegurarse de que los contratos de servicios sociales en el departamento de servicios humanos reciben incrementos de inflación cada año. Tenemos un cocinero combatiano, y nuestros desayunos son la cocina combatiana. Cantamos karaoke y bailamos después de los desayunos. Organizamos un evento especial para celebrar el nuevo año combatiano y el Día Nacional de Refugio. Ir en excursiones y participar en actividades físicas. El Senior Center de South Park me ayudó a quedarme aquí en United States. El personal me ayudó a celebrar mi matrimonio. Voluntariamente, incluido, traducir e interpretar entre inglés y kumia. Nuestros sensores cubren al 60% de la gente de color, los inmigrantes, refugiados y inmigrantes. Por favor, aseguren que los dólares que apoyan nuestro programa no demanen eso de inflación. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Muchas gracias. Wallingford Community Center, bienvenidos. Oh, muy mal, Claire.
Petersky.
Petersky, mis disculpas. Desde el Community Center de Wallingford, y luego Bill Hallerman de Catholic Community Services. Lo siento por eso.
Está bien, responderé a lo que quieras. Me gusta persely, es muy lindo. Soy Claire Petersky, en realidad, la directora del Senior Center de la Comunidad de Wallingford. Y quiero agradecer a la ciudad primero por apoyar las servicios para adultos mayores para que puedan vivir en salud, seguridad y dignidad en nuestras comunidades. Estoy llamando a ustedes a pasar legislación permanente para asegurar que los servicios contratados de la ciudad mantengan la inflación. Wallingford Community Senior Center es una organización independiente, no lucrativa, y obtenemos aproximadamente un cuarto de nuestro presupuesto de ADS. Somos capaces de apoyar a nuestros participantes de menor ingreso, aquellos que son más confiables en nuestras servicios principales, tales como el trabajo social debido a este financiamiento. Nuestro mayor gasto, por supuesto, es para las personas que hacen nuestros programas posibles. Como se encuentra ahora, ya tengo personal que trabaja los fines de semana haciendo trabajos adicionales porque simplemente no pagamos suficiente. Necesitamos ser capaces de ofrecer ajustes de coste de vida para que no se desvanezcan incluso más. Cuando el financiamiento de la ciudad es contratado y no corre con la inflación, es el equivalente a una reducción para nuestro personal y para nuestros servicios. Así que por favor, aproben esta legislación permanente para asegurar que los servicios sociales puedan mantenerse con la inflación. Gracias.
Gracias, Claire.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Bill Hallerman. Soy el director de Catholic Community Services de King County. Fui a la página de oportunidades de trabajo de la ciudad de Seattle esta mañana. Había 92 trabajos abiertos, y estaba feliz de ver que 91 de los 92 trabajos pagaban al menos $22.59 por hora. Trabajo en Catholic Community Services. Tenemos 502 empleados en King County. El 75% de nuestro personal está por debajo de $22.59 por hora. Quiero ser claro, estoy feliz de que la ciudad de Seattle esté tratando de pagar a los chicos un salario de vida. Eso es realmente bueno. Pero no nos engañemos tampoco. Creo que la inmigración de esta ciudad y la respuesta social de los servicios es construida en la base de los trabajadores y no lucrativos que trabajan por un salario inferior a la mayor frecuencia. Así que digo que cada centavo que ustedes pueden dar intentará llegar a la misma estándar a la que aparentemente ustedes sostienen a sus propios empleados. Así que en conclusión, solo diría, por favor, ustedes saben que nuestros personal aquí está trabajando cada vez más y más con los trabajadores más difíciles para servir. Están haciendo esto con compasión, están haciendo esto con competencia, están haciendo esto con un costo para sí mismos y su familia que francamente encuentro inspirador. Así que por favor, ayuden a nosotros al otorgar el ajuste.
Muchas gracias. Voy a leer cuatro nombres. Shiza Damji, Hoa Ga, del Senior South Park, Stephanie Anderson de YWCA, y Jessica Horton de Pan Pacific. Hola, lo siento por la pronunciación.
No, lo tienes bien.
Okay.
Gracias a todos ustedes por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Shiza Damji. Durante más de 40 años, mi familia ha propiedad del Hotel Nexus y Northgate. Somos un pequeño negocio, y estoy en el Consejo de Asesorías de Negocios de la Mayoría. Los hoteles de Seattle, incluyéndome, han apoyado la legislación progresiva, tales como los aumentos de los salarios mínimos, la despedida familiar pagada a nivel estatal y los botones de pánico para los empleados de los hoteles. Como propietaria de negocios inmigrantes, estoy completamente vestida en hacer que esta ciudad y región sea una comunidad de vivienda para todos. También soy miembro de la Alianza de propietarios asiáticos estadounidenses conocida como AHOA, una organización nacional que ha escrito cartas a cada miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad y al oficio de la mayor sobre la proposada legislación de los trabajadores de hoteles. Los miembros de AHOA son principalmente los primeros y segundos generación de propietarios de pequeños negocios con una fuerte apreciación por las oportunidades que se ofrecen por una comunidad que se supone que debe agradecer a los negocios inmigrantes y familiares. La razón por la que AHOA fue fundada fue porque los propietarios asiáticos estadounidenses en todo el país estaban enfrentando discriminación a bancos y compañías de seguros y otros desafíos asociados con las rigurosidades de la entrepreneurship. Por eso fueron fundados. Hoy, lo que están encontrando es que una consecuencia inintuita, diría, si la legislación de los trabajadores de hoteles del Consejo de la Ciudad de Seattle o la proposada legislación va a desfranchar desproporcionalmente los negocios de hoteles y relacionados de familia y inmigrantes de la ciudad de Seattle.
Gracias. Y por favor, dejen sus comentarios porque sé que tengo que rescatarlos.
¿Sabes qué? Tengo tres. Lo pondré junto en un papel.
Eso suena bien, y eso es verdad para cualquiera. Y Katie Garro, también nos encantaría ver su resolución. Gracias. Gracias por esperar, lo siento por eso. Nosotros tenemos al Senior South Park. ¿Lo tengo bien, Hoa Ga? Okay, tal vez me he pronunciado mal. Lo siento. Si hay alguien aquí que tiene el nombre de H-O-A. Okay, voy a seguir. Stephanie Anderson de YWCA, Jessica Horton, seguido de Michael Quinn.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Stephanie Anderson, y soy gerente de programa con la YWCA de Seattle, King y Snohomish. Quiero agradecer al consejo por su tiempo y atención. A mi nombre y a la YWCA de Seattle, King y Snohomish, os expongo a automatizarmente ajustar los contratos de servicios humanos para la inflación para que podamos mantener la infraestructura de servicios humanos que hemos construido juntos. Todos entendemos que la inflación es parte de la economía diaria. Por eso, en 1975, el Congreso reconoció que los ajustes de coste de vida eran críticos, específicamente en situaciones financieras donde instituciones y la gente están trabajando con una cantidad fija de ingresos. Nuestros servicios actuales están enfrentando costos operativos constantemente aumentantes como luz, calor, agua y otros costos de mantenimiento de instalaciones. Desafortunadamente, no todos los contratos de HSD proporcionan la capacidad de cubrir la seguridad para los que servimos, o el costo de... Gracias.
Gracias, y por favor, dejen sus comentarios también. Jessica, bienvenida.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Jessica Horton, y soy la directora de apoyo de la gente para el Pan Pacific Hotel y la Union de South Lake. Thank you for allowing our hotel and the opportunity to speak and be heard again. As I mentioned to you last week, I have worked in various different industries to include law enforcement, social services, nonprofit, and supply chain. We care deeply for the health and welfare and safety of our associates, and we have an understanding that taking the best possible care of our associate is key to our success, something that every owner, GM, and hotel personnel in this room can attest to. It's enlightening and ironic at the same time to hear from the nonprofits that have testified this morning in regards to what they get paid and the dedication and what they are bringing to this city. We're focused on hospitality and overtime when maybe we should be focused on nonprofits and paying them appropriately.
Thank you. Toby Hillmeyer, Steve Dachell, and then David Hettle.
Thank you. I'm Michael Quinn from Plymouth Housing Group, and for too long, even as the crisis of homelessness in our community has grown due to insufficient resources, human service providers are asked to do more with less, as if the road to success passed only through efficiency landmarks. As someone who's worked in the human services field in Seattle for 29 years, I've seen the challenges increase to providers to try to valiantly treat a deep and hemorrhaging wound with Band-Aids and Purell and sleepless nights. I want to thank the OPIU employees of our agency that are here today for the sacrifices they make to do this work. It's as if the provider just tried hard enough or collaborated enough or dadded enough, this wound would heal through triage rather than intensive care. Today, permanent supportive housing providers are actually holding on to individuals that really need to be in nursing homes or assisted living, but due to the complex behavioral health issues, they actually maintain a permanent supportive housing. In closing, I'd like to say that the Mayor of Austin is touring our city over the next couple of days to learn what mistakes we've made in our work. And I would say, the first thing I would tell the Mayor of Austin to do is make sure that you have an adjustment for inflation in all your human services contract and hope that Mayor Durkin would support the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Michael. If folks can line up behind Toby, Steve, David, and then Mary Lou Dickerson.
Hi. My name is Toby Hillmeyer. I'm one of the co-executive directors of Gender Justice League. We're an advocacy organization fighting for civil and human rights for transgender people. We're good at what we do, but the need vastly outpaces our ability. Marginalized communities disproportionately face this burden, facing discrimination, job loss, greater risk of violence, then have a harder time accessing services. There are zero shelters in Seattle designed for trans people, and existing shelters struggle to prevent anti-trans harassment. Gender Justice League was not created for direct services, but we started providing emergency housing out of our office because we see the need in our community as so great. Housing costs, not to mention office rent, are rising much faster than inflation, and our community needs better services. Literally, the least that you could do is help those services not fall behind.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Dachell, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Seattle Human Services Coalition this morning. SHSC members provide the services that support Seattle residents across their lifespan. From youth development to senior centers, gender-based violence response and prevention to community clinics, human services build well-being in Seattle. Automatically adjusting human services contracts for inflation would allow you to keep up those services and maintain the human services infrastructure we've built together. In some years, the city has made inflation adjustments on some contracts, but even though sporadic adjustments amount to less than the actual cost of inflation, effectively reducing the reach of services. Simply put, you undermine our capacity to reach our goals when costs to provide services rise, but your investment does not. Consistently adjusting for inflation is an effective, common sense business practice we urge you to implement. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
My name is David Heldy. I'm a housing case manager at DESE and a union delegate for SEIU 1199. I work very closely with some of Seattle's most vulnerable homeless, and I also help to represent all of DESE's union-represented employees, and I have done so for four years now. And I can tell you that we simply don't have the resources to do what we need to do right now. And I thank you very much for introducing this bill. The inflation-adjusted contracts would, it would absolutely help. We simply need more. The number-one complaint I hear from the other employees is just, why aren't we getting paid more? The number-one complaint I hear from clients is, why can't you give me the things I need in order to live? Why can't I have clean underwear? Why can't I have food?
Thank you, David. Thank you very much, David. And I apologize I didn't say your name earlier. This is the Honorable Representative Mary Lou Dickerson. Thank you for being here and for your service to the state.
Thank you, and good morning, council members. I am, as was said, Mary Lou Dickerson, and I'm here on behalf of the Youth Care Board of Directors in support of the wage, or the inflation legislation. And I'm also here as a former member of the Legislature and Chair of Appropriations for Health and Human Services. So I really do know how difficult it can be to balance all these things when you're doing a budget. But I also want to say that we have a history in government, including the city, of putting human services often on the chopping block when it comes to balancing things. And that's been happening way too long, and it's ended up in the field of human services here in the city being literally at a breaking point. You're going to hear today about the lack of inflation adjustment and how it impacts agencies' ability to recruit and retain staff and thus provide quality services. But what I'm here to talk about is the impact on infrastructure of the human services agencies. Infrastructure that includes crumbling buildings, broken elevators, 15-year-old computers, et cetera. It's time that we treat human services as we treat our public infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, our seawalls, et cetera. They keep us safe. So does human services. Ensuring that providers can keep up with the costs of doing business is an essential first step in stabilizing our human services and bringing us closer to realizing the city's vision of a just and thriving community. It's time. It's past time. Let's do this now.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read five names. Simone Andu, Erica Limon, Liz Argi, Jimmy Burton, and Angela Dannerberg. Hi.
Hello. Good morning, council members. My name is Simone Andu, and I'm here today on behalf of Youth Care's Orion Center to support the annual inflation adjustment for human services. In the last two years, the Orion Center has had to fix a broken oven, laundry machines, showers, bathrooms, and a heating system. The cost of basic maintenance eats up our budget. For example, for every day that our laundry was broken, we paid $250 a night to clean the shelter sheets, money that could have been spent on staff and programming. Within my two years, I witnessed the turnover of over 45 staff members at the Orion Center. As a manager, I invested time and money in staff training, development, yet they left for high-paying jobs as soon as they got the necessary experience. Every time this happens, young people's baseline drops because of the separation and re-tribetization, which makes it that much harder for the next staff member to build trust with the youth. The difference between the staff and youth is one paycheck. As a leader, it is painful to see my staff struggle in the same way as our youth just to survive. So I'm asking you to help everyone here to maintain our buildings and implement quality programming because our youth and staff deserve not to just survive, but to thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Erica Limon, and I'm a Program Manager at Youth Care, testifying today in support of an annual inflation adjustment for human services contracts. No one comes into this work looking to make money, but I fought tooth and nail to get this job because I saw that Youth Care was one of the only agencies in the country to help both under-18 youth and over-18 young adults. This was important to me because turning 18 doesn't mean you suddenly no longer need support or guidance or access to resources. How do I know this? Because it was me. I was homeless at the age of 15 and placed into foster care. But when I turned 18, it was like DSH just wiped his hands of me. I was completely on my own. But I was one of the lucky ones. When I turned 17, I was connected with a nonprofit where I met a woman named Kim. She helped me receive a scholarship that helped me go to college. Kim believed that I was worth something, and that made all the difference. So I know personally the importance of this work because when done well, it changes lives. My biggest fear working at Youth Care is that when we can't keep up with costs, when we can't pay staff enough to do their job well, we cause harm. So I'm asking that you give agencies the resources they need to create long-lasting positive change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Liz Aggie, and I am here representing International Community Health Services. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the annual inflation adjustments. Established in 1973, ICHS is a federally qualified health center that provides culturally and linguistically appropriate, comprehensive, and affordable health and wellness services at 11 sites throughout King County. Our facilities and providers offer patients the very best in primary care quality, and our programs give community members the opportunities they need to live healthier and more fulfilled lives at every stage of development. Health centers like ICHS are crucial access points for people seeking high-quality and affordable health care that they cannot get anywhere else. One of our patients has described seeking treatment for chronic kidney disease, a condition worsened by the combined stresses of financial burden and society's lack of awareness around trans issues. But ICHS provides this patient with a place where they feel cared for and where they are finally starting to trust doctors. Without stable funding streams, it is very difficult for health centers like ICHS to make long-term program and staffing plans that allow us to best serve our patients and communities. Thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Burton, and I work for Catholic Community Services. I'm also a single parent of three children and a victim of domestic violence. Three years ago, my husband beat me pretty terribly in our home, and he was incarcerated. At that time, I was getting ready to transfer positions in Catholic Community Services to supervise a case management program with St. Martin de Porre Shelter and Lazarus Day Center. I did transition into that position. I didn't have a lot of time to think about mental health. It was really important for me to be able to independently support my children and to pay the bills so that I did not also become homeless. I've been in that position for three years, and about a year and a half ago, I made the decision to return to school because Catholic Community Services was unable to give me the raise that was necessary for me to continue to support myself and my children. I will be vacating that position on September 13th, and it's very concerning for me that we are, as social service workers, we're here to help support people that are in positions to not be able to take care of themselves. However, as a supervisor of a program, I too cannot afford that and am susceptible to becoming homeless myself. So I really hope that you support the adjustment for inflation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council. My name is Angela Dannerberg. I'm the new Executive Director at the Domestic Abuse Women's Network. I'm here to request the passing of inflation adjustment across the human services contracts for providers. At dawn, we support, empower, and shelter survivors of domestic abuse. My staff worked tirelessly around the clock to serve survivors in the last year who spoke 17 different primary languages. We also saw an average of 109% increase in client need. Our crisis support line took over 5,700 calls, and our shelter provided services for 105 women and 107 children. However, currently, for every one survivor family in need in King County, 57 are turned away. It is imperative to pass this legislation to continue to provide and grow our services. My staff work 24/7 on a crisis line, and we see the growing need and the ability to provide my staff the resources and support inconsistency to provide services for this vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to let you know we really appreciate you coming to testify this morning, and sorry to cut it down to one minute. We do have six more people signed up, but at this point, we've been doing public testimony for 45 minutes. I do need to transition to the Domestic Workers Standards Board appointment because we've got some folks that need to get to work, and I hate that feeling when you've got to get to work and you're running late. If we do have time, we'll come back and we'll do the remaining folks. If you do have public testimony that you'd like to submit in writing, we can do that as well. So I'm going to leave the public comment period open just in case we have additional time that we can squeeze it in. But I would like us to go ahead and read into the agenda item number one, Faridee. And when you're doing that, can we please have Jasmine, Victor, and Diana join us at the table? Cuando ella está leyendo este título, Jasmine, Victor, Diana, pueden pasar y tomar sus asientos en la mesa, por favor?
Agenda item one, a question of Victor M. Lozada as member of the Domestic Workers Standards Board for term to February 28, 2022, for briefing discussion and possible vote.
So, Diana, welcome. Bienvenidos. So today, we have our last appointment to the Domestic Workers Standard Board. This appointment is the ninth position that was selected by the board. We're going to have each of you introduce yourself for the record. And Victor, I know you have to go a little bit early for work, so vamos a empezar con un voz, con usted. Y si puedes contar un poco de su experiencia como un trabajador doméstico y sobre lo que te gustaría hacer en esta posición? Pero antes de esto, vamos a pedir para cada persona decir su nombre primero, y si tienes algo de decir, está bien empezar con esto. If you have something to say at the beginning, you can start with that. Yes, please.
My name is Jasmine Marwaha with the Seattle Office of Labor Standards.
My name is Victor Lozada. I'm a member of the Casa Latina Laborers.
Excellent.
My name is Diana Malak. I'm the interpreter.
Oh, excellent. Okay, I will stop with my bad Spanish. Thank you so much for being here. And Jasmine, welcome to the table in your new role as OLS worker. We're very excited to have your office represented and for your incredible skills to be at the Office of Labor Standards. Would you like to start with some comments?
Sure. Thank you so much. It's great to be here. So as you know, last year, council passed a Domestic Workers Bill of Rights granting increased labor protections for...
Bring it right up here, too.
Is it still?
There you go.
I used to tell people that. Granting increased labor protections for domestic workers, including nannies, housecleaners, cooks, gardeners, home care workers, and household managers who work in a private home in the city of Seattle. The Domestic Workers Ordinance also created the Domestic Workers Standards Board to provide a forum for hiring entities, domestic workers, worker organizations, and the public to consider, analyze, and make recommendations to the city on greater legal protections, benefits, and working conditions for domestic workers. I should actually pause and say that I will just continue with my spiel in English, and the interpreter is here primarily for when Victor speaks, if that's all right. So that's why I'm just going to keep going, if that's all right. That was my understanding. Yeah.
Okay.
Muchas gracias por...
I'm still going to... Is that okay if I can still?
Okay.
Sorry.
Do you have something else?
Oh, yeah.
Please continue.
Sorry. I just wanted to sort of introduce that we're, the Domestic Workers Standards Board consists of four worker representatives, two workers in particular, and two worker organization representatives, four hiring entity representatives. And the board has met five times, including a day-long retreat, to get prepared for the work plan that we will be submitting to you later this year. And that we are here today because the Domestic Workers Standards Board has selected its ninth member, Victor Lozado, and we are asking for council confirmation on his appointment. I'll let Victor talk a little bit more about himself, but I wanted to say that the board was very impressed with his application and, in particular, is very excited for the organizing experience that Victor brings, as well as his experience as a gardener in the city. That was sort of a gap in the industries represented on the board, and so the board really feels that they are ready to go with Victor's knowledge and experience. And now I will turn it over to him. Thanks.
Y gracias, gracias por estar aquí con nosotros, y gracias por hablar con nosotros sobre su experiencia y lo que interesa en esta mesa de servir los trabajadores del hogar.
Muchas gracias. Gracias a los miembros del consejo por invitarme.
Y puedes echar esto muy cerca de su boca. Ah, sí, mejor.
Okay? Here, está bien. Espero que me escuche bien la intervención. Espero que me escuche bien la intervención.
And for the audience, we are going to have translation in Spanish as Victor speaks as well.
Sí. Bueno, estoy muy motivado por el hecho de saber que ha sido aceptado este nuevo código en la legislación de la ciudad.
I am very much motivated for the fact that this new code has been accepted by the city of Seattle.
Y me sentí compelido a participar con mi experiencia.
And I feel compelled to participate due to my experience.
Tanto en el campo de la organización de ciudadanos como en mi experiencia como en la jardín, el trabajo de jardinería en esta ciudad.
Both as my experience as a gardener and also with the citizens.
Creo que todos nosotros nos sentimos contentos, nos sentimos, tenemos un momento de, a veces, de solaz o de relax en un jardín.
We all feel happy and we feel relaxed when we are in a garden.
Pero pocas veces ponemos nuestra mente en el trabajo que se ha tenido que hacer para mantener ese jardín en la condición que lo que nos gusta.
But we don't think about all the work that took place in order to keep the garden in the condition that we like it to be.
Y me siento, siento una gran responsabilidad por traer la voz de los trabajadores de los jardines a esta mesa, a este consejo, y a este board.
And I have a lot of responsibility bringing the voice of the gardeners and all the garden workers to this meeting, to this place now.
Pienso que es un gran avance que sea o sea la primera ciudad que nos da los derechos como a cualquier otro trabajador.
I think Seattle is doing a great thing that is giving us the rights that other workers have.
Y pienso más que la ciudad, nuestra sociedad en general, como cualquier organismo vivo.
And I think also that the city, like our society in general, like any other living organism--
Debe tener un balance.
It must have a balance.
No solo se trata de, a través de esta organización, de pedir, de solicitar, de requerir.
It's not only about this organization asking, requesting, soliciting.
Sino también una plataforma para que esta fuerza de trabajo--
But also a platform that this working force--
Pueda profesionalizarse más.
Can become more professionalized.
Pueda aportar más a la sociedad.
Can give more to society.
Sabemos que, por ejemplo, Vancouver, B.C., tiene unos jardines muy bonitos.
We know, for example, that Vancouver, B.C., has very beautiful gardens.
Pero nosotros tenemos el mismo clima y sabemos que podemos tener los mejores jardines de América.
But we have the same weather as Vancouver, B.C., and we know that we can have the best gardens in America.
Y que nosotros los jardineros podemos tener una buena vida.
And that us, the workers, can have a good life.
Estoy un poquito cansado del cliché. De--
I'm a little bit tired about the cliché.
De que jardinería es un trabajo low-class job.
That gardening is a low-class job.
Y que no requiere inteligencia.
And it doesn't require intelligence.
O ningún elaborado pensamiento.
Or no elaborate thinking.
Pero cualquiera que haya trabajado en su jardín sabe que es un poco más difícil que simplemente salir a arrancar hierbitas.
But anybody who's worked in his own garden knows that gardening is more complex than simply go and taking all the herbs and--
Put it so, something like that. Mi experiencia en México fue distinta organizando a las personas que participan en el trabajo de las elecciones hace muchos años.
My experience in Mexico was organizing people that worked for the elections many years ago.
Y conozco la satisfacción que trae el contribuir a mejorar la sociedad.
And I know the satisfaction that it brings to do something to improve society.
Y aunque simples estas son mis motivaciones y mis reflexiones sobre este, sobre este trabajo.
And simply these are my motivations and my reflections about this job.
Pues, mil gracias. Gracias por estar aquí. Thank you so much for being here. Y gracias por su interesa en este mesa. Thank you for your interest in this table. Y gracias por su apoyo por los otros trabajadores. Thank you for your support and advocacy for other workers. Alguien tiene una pregunta? Anybody have another question? Council president.
I just want to say thank you for serving. And gardening, in my opinion, is an art, and he described it beautifully.
Muchas gracias por servir, y en la opinión de él, jardinería es un arte y es una cosa que produce algo muy beautiful.
I look forward to supporting him on this board. It's a critical board, and I look forward, I think he'll be an outstanding addition.
Okay. Él está, él lo va a apoyar en todo.
Muchas gracias.
Algo más? Alguien más?
Thank you. I just want to say that it's really--
Finish.
Yeah. It's really important that we have people on this board with lived experiences like yours, and we, as council members, count on you to push us so that we can pass better laws for workers in our city and we could be a leader in this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
¿Se le traduzco?
No. Thank you much.
Muy, muy bien. ¿Algo más? Okay. Pues, si como no hay más preguntas, since there's no more questions, I'm really excited. Estoy muy, no, no sé. Tengo mucha energía sobre este tema. I have a lot of energy around this theme, and I know that you're going to be a great addition to the table. Yo sé que vas a aumentar la calidad de esta mesa, y necesitamos su experiencia, and we need your experience. So without any further ado, I'd like to go ahead and move the committee recommends confirmation of Victor Lozada as a member of Domestic Workers Standards Board.
Say it.
Are there any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? Muy bien. It was universally passed. Gracias por su tiempo y gracias por estar aquí. We will bring the motion to the full committee on July 15th. You don't have to be there, but you're welcome to be there. En el lunes que viene, en el quince de julio, vamos a junio, no, julio. Vamos a tener su nombre en nuestra agenda. No es importante estar allá con nosotros, pero está bienvenidos. Estás allá, sería muy bien verte de nuevo, pero no es necesario. Gracias por su tiempo y por toda la traducción. Thank you very much, OLS.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our second agenda item. And before we do that, I just want to thank our full table here, our committee members, Councilmember Bagshaw, Vice Chair Juárez, Councilmember Herbert, and Council President Harrell. Thank you all for being here today. Please welcome to the table Emily Alvarado and Tracy Ratscliffe. And Faridee, if you can read Agenda item number two.
The item two, Council Bill 119537, in ordinance relating to the sale of low-income housing, for briefing and discussion.
Welcome. And if you want to do introductions, then I'll say a few remarks.
Sure. Tracy Ratscliffe, Council Central Staff.
Emily Alvarado, Office of Housing.
Excellent. So I want to remind folks, there is not a vote on this today. This is one of the bills that we will be discussing again next committee meeting. We did have a chance to talk about this bill once already. As folks know, this is an opportunity for us to provide an additional tool in our tool belt when we're looking for how we level the playing field so that more tenants themselves and nonprofit developers have a chance to access multifamily units as they come on the market. Right now, there's a lot of people who are coming with cash in hand to buy some of these multifamily units. So what we're trying to do is provide more opportunities for folks to have a chance to make an offer either as tenants or nonprofit developers. And I'll hold some of our comments around the amendments as we walk through. Tracy, thank you so much for the presentation that you've provided for us, and we will jump right into it. Again, as a reminder, this is a discussion-purpose-only meeting, and we will have a potential vote next week.
Thank you, council members. So we did have a first discussion of this proposed legislation on the 13th of June in committee. Today, I just want to, first of all, kind of briefly summarize what's in the proposed substitute and then go to the four amendments that are being proposed for discussion today. So just to remind you, in the proposed legislation, it would expand the notice requirement to include multifamily buildings with two or more housing units. Currently, the notice requirement is only applicable to buildings with five or more units. The notice period would be increased from 60 days to 90 days. It would require the building owner to submit a signed declaration to the city stating that they are complying with the notice requirements included in this legislation. It would require the building owners to prominently post notice in the building that's going to be sold, and this is to alert the tenants to the reality that that building may be, in fact, sold. It would require building owners who receive an unsolicited offer to issue the notice, both to the city and also to the tenants, within two days of receiving that offer. It would prohibit the building owner from executing a purchase-and-sale agreement until 90 days after the required notices are issued. And then finally, it would increase the penalty for noncompliance from $500 to $2,000. So moving to the proposed amendments, let's move to, you're just wonderful. So there are four amendments. The first is a tiered notice requirement. The second has to do with an evaluation of the notice provisions by the city auditor. The third has to do with workshops to facilitate building sales. And the fourth has to do with strategies to monitor enforcement compliance and provide an ongoing stakeholders group. So the First Amendment, which is probably the most complex of the four, makes changes to the notice requirement. And what it does is it would establish a tiered process, and it would have a process for small buildings, which are the two- to four-sized unit buildings, your duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. And then there'd be a separate notice process for buildings with five or more units. Just so you know, we didn't pick this up out of the air. We actually looked at San Francisco and DC, who have a similar tiered notice requirement. So we really looked at what they did. We had conversations with some of the stakeholders about this, and what we have come up with, I think, is kind of what reflects a lot of those conversations and input from other jurisdictions. So the first, let's look first at the two-to-four units. So after the owner issues the notice, whether it's because they're getting ready to list the property or because they got an offer, 15 days after that owner issues that notice, a tenant, a tenant group, nonprofit housing developer, Seattle Housing Authority, or I think we also added OH into this, would have the ability to issue a statement of interest to the owner, to building owner. And that would be a written statement via email, I think we say mail, all the various ways that you can transmit that. If at that first 15 days, nobody lets the building owner know that they have an interest in purchasing the building, the building owner would be free at that point to move forward with a sale of the property. If you had one of those entities raise their hand and say, "Yep, we're interested," you move then to the next tier, which is 15 days after that statement of interest was submitted, they would have to, the tenant group in this case, and I'll explain why we don't require it of the others, or the tenant group would have to submit documentation that demonstrates their financial ability to purchase the building. And in the legislation, we define the documentation as being something from a financial institution or a mortgage loan officer or lender that shows that the tenant or the tenant group has the financial ability to purchase the building. We also give OH the ability to establish other forms of documentation, which, for example, could be a letter from OH that says somebody is eligible for a homeownership loan in the amount that's needed to buy the building, is one example we could think of. But they would have the ability to look at some alternatives.
May I ask a clarifying question, Tracy?
Yes.
Good. Chair's distracted, so I know I can.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify something to understand the context of this amendment. The, without the amendment, the concept that a purchase-and-sale agreement cannot be entered into within that 90-day window--
Correct.
--the thought being, of course, to give nonprofit developers, of course, an opportunity and give the tenants an opportunity to relocate, which is, really puts them behind an eight ball if they just get 30 days' notice, for example, particularly a lower-income tenant, right? That's the concept behind it, correct?
I don't think relocation of tenants is really the issue. I think it is for the notice of the tenants, it's just letting them know that their building may be sold. And so it's just information for them. I don't think it's necessarily the idea that we're going to be thinking the tenants are all going to decide to relocate because the building frankly may not sell or may not sell for many months. But it's just to give the tenants notice of that potential event.
So the concept of the 90-day wait period, if you will, is not driven because of the needs of the tenant? I thought it was driven because of the needs of the tenant, because they have to, particularly an 80% of AMI person has, it's going to be hard for them to relocate quickly, and I thought we were trying to give them more time. So that's not a policy consideration?
I think the primary--
I thought that was the driver.
Forgive me if I'm speaking out of term, but I think the primary driver is to give a tenant, tenant group, a nonprofit organization, the city or SHA, the opportunity to actually submit an offer to the owner. It may be, the secondary thing might be that you give tenants notice that might enable them to move. That would, I don't know that that was really the primary thing, that we're going to give them the information that's going to make them want to move. I think it's just to give them notice of a potential sale.
The legislative intent here is really focused on leveling the playing field for the purchase of the building. And you're right, there's some really great programs that our Office of Housing and others offer to tenants for relocation assistance. This was really intended to make sure that those who are living in multifamily units, especially those with at least one unit at 80% AMI or below, that they have the same opportunity that we had provided to those living in apartment buildings with five or more units. We currently have in statute that you, if you have a five-or-more-unit multifamily structure, you are supposed to notify the city before those buildings are sold. And what we found is that many of the nonprofit developers have said a 60-day window was just too short for them to get all the materials together. And what we also decided is that many of our two-, three-, and four-unit structures, those have a lot of really affordable units sometimes that often get picked up on the market very quickly, and we are not giving our chance for the tenants or the nonprofit developers to help make an offer. So it doesn't change any of the tenant notification requirements in terms of relocation. It also doesn't change the cost of the building. We're not messing with the market in any way there. But I think it's really about the notification for both tenants and nonprofits.
So is it that the seller cannot sign a document, or can they sign a document but not close it within the 90 days?
No, they could not sign the document. The way the proposed legislation is drafted, they could not sign a purchase-and-sale agreement until the 90 days had elapsed.
But talk about the amendment.
But the amendment changes that.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for the context.
Sure. And just to be clear, there is no requirement for the tenants to be noticed underneath the current provisions, the current policy. So that is a new piece. But again, I think the intent was to give the tenants the opportunity, one, to potentially put an offer in, but also just to let them know that there could be a change in the situation as it relates to their building.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So that second tier is the tenant has to prove that they have the financial ability to purchase the building. If they cannot provide that documentation, the owner is, in fact, free at that point, again, to move forward with listing and/or selling their property. We don't require, we are not requiring SHA, the Office of Housing, or a qualified nonprofit housing developer who has raised their hand and said, "We're interested in purchasing." We are not requiring them to meet that financial ability because we presume they have the financial ability to do that. It's the tenant or the tenant group that may be the ones that would, we would have, you'd wonder whether they have the financial ability to do it.
May I ask a quick question?
Yep.
I don't know if John Fox is still here. Is he? So he cornered me coming into my office, and we had a good chat about his concern around nonprofits and the impact this would have on an individual nonprofit's ability to purchase. And I just wanted, I think you just answered the question, Tracy, well, but I just wanted to reiterate that if Catholic Community Services or Plymouth Housing or any of the Bellwether or others, do they have to be pre-approved by the Office of Housing? How does that work if, and let's just say, John Fox's nonprofit wanted to buy?
So we define a qualified nonprofit as a housing developer who has done an affordable housing project in the city of Seattle, I think three projects maybe, and is in good standing with the Office of Housing, as defined in our housing funding policies. And basically, what that good standing requirement is, is that they are in compliance with all of their management plan requirements, you know, operation-- of their management plan requirements, you know, operations of their building. So, it's getting at, one, they've had the experience developing housing and doing that well in the city, and also that they're operating their buildings well. And so, we have defined them and said that those will be our qualified nonprofits, who we will presume have the financial ability, and frankly, the operational ability, to take on a potential purchase.
So, just piggybacking on what Council President Harrell had asked, the way that this amendment would work is that if it's a tenant or a tenant group, first, they do raise their hand and say, "We're interested." Then, within 15 days, they have to come up with something that says, "We've got the resources to do this."
Correct.
But if there is no tenant group that does that, then it's 30 days later, the seller could enter into a contract with someone else. How does the nonprofit fit in there, under those circumstances?
So, the nonprofit, at that first 15 days, would have to raise their hand and say, "I have an interest." And if they do, then they have an additional 30-day, well, actually, they have 15, no, they have 30, 30 days from that statement of interest, everybody does, from that statement of interest, to then submit an offer to the seller and try to reach agreement on the sale of the building.
But I think part of the question that came up, and I want to thank John for raising this, is that some nonprofits, I mean, most of them, Emily, I mean, you're the star here on this, they leverage funds, they apply for grants, they're working on tax credits in order to bring that package together. So, what assurance are we giving the nonprofit by this, that they will actually have the time that they need to accomplish what we're trying to do?
So, one of the conversations that we have had about, I think, this proposal is that we don't have resources to buy every potential building that might come up for sale in the city of Seattle. So, we should not be thinking that we're making promises here, that we're going to be able, or the nonprofits are going to be able to step into every one of these buildings and purchase. I especially think that's true, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, on these smaller projects, duplex or triplex, a fourplex. We have a different notice requirement for the five or larger units, so it's a longer period in terms of putting together a purchase and sale agreement. But as it relates to these smaller units, it's hard for me to imagine that we're going to have a lot of nonprofits who are going to take advantage of those units. I think that's where I see more likely the tenants or tenant group would step in to say, "We want to purchase those buildings." And you can tell me if I might be wrong about that.
No, I think that's right. As a reminder, council passed just a few weeks ago our administrative and financial plan, and in that plan is our Acquisition and Preservation Fund. It's now a revolving $30 million fund that uses other money that have long-term needs for short-term purposes. And if someone were to apply to funds for either preservation acquisition loans for multifamily or for homeownership, it would be through that fund. And those are very limited resources. In places like San Francisco, for example, where they have these kinds of notice requirements, they also actually tend to have standalone preservation funds, like the Small Sites Program in San Francisco, that then can create the resources to effectuate the outcomes that are identified in the notice ordinance.
Councilmember Herbl.
Thank you. Can you just remind me, for the sake of my bad memory, these three steps, as described in the bill before us, are all three of them collapsed with 90 days? Is that what it needs to be demonstrated within 90 days under the current bill?
No. The 90 days goes away, and what comes in place of it is this...
No, I mean, in the current bill.
Oh, there's nothing in here about these tiered notice requirements.
So, what has to happen within 90 days in the current bill?
They just have 90 days. Nonprofit, a tenant can, on their own volition, we say nothing about their ability to go to a potential seller and submit a purchase and sale agreement. There is nothing in the initial bill that says anything about this ability to show that you have interest or to show that you have financial viability. None of that is in the existing bill.
If I can add a finer point to that?
Just that there's the, the building owner has the obligation to make it known that the property is for sale for 90 days.
Correct.
There's no obligation to demonstrate anything to the owner with, on the part of the nonprofit, within that 90 days.
Correct.
And I would add, what we had heard from a number of folks, both community organizations and some folks who are in this industry, is, you know, there is a real interest in making sure that the folks who are saying, "I would be interested in this property, I'd like this," you know, the raising of the hand that Tracy talks about, do have the viability to make the offer. We're not including nonprofit developers in that. And in fact, many of the tenants, we are also including in the posting, that if they are interested, we're going to give them the information for where to go to reach our Office of Housing, SHA, and nonprofit developers. The concept here was, though, we also recognize that we don't want folks necessarily raising their hand and then putting a stay on a potential sale for 90 days, if there really is no ability to do that. And so, we wanted to put in reasonable timeframes for the raising of the hand and to recognize that our nonprofit developers are not going to have to verify, they've already been verified in many ways. But if there's tenants who are interested, let's say it's a fourplex, and those four tenants were really interested in creating a co-op, they would then have the ability to say, "Yes, we're interested." Then, the next opportunity is for them to work with a nonprofit developer to show that they have not just interest, but they have also potential viability. Then, they have that additional 90 days to say, or it's a fourplex, then they have the additional 30 days to say, "Here's what we've put together, and we'd love to work with you on an offer." That helps us, I think, recognize the difference between a two- and four-unit structure. And then, what we've heard from others is that many of the five-plus unit structures are a much different animal when it comes to purchasing. So, this helps us, I think, recognize that some of these opportunities to purchase are not going to be acted upon, and then frees up the sale a little bit quicker. But also, I think it gives us the ability to then, hand-in-hand, work with some of the tenants who might want to be interested and know that they need to show action by a certain date. Tracy, I'm going to ask us to keep going through the presentation because I know we have other items on the agenda, and I want to let our council colleagues know as well. I've asked our friends at the Office of Labor Standards if they would be willing to come back a different day for the recent social justice report, and that way, we can have a robust discussion on the next two agenda items.
And Chair, if I can ask, and first of all, thank you for allowing me to come in late. I had, of course, chaired the Retirement Board Committee this morning. Councilmember Juarez and I have a 12 o'clock...
No problem.
...full stop. And I'm wondering whether one of the items that you are intending to have a possible vote on should be discussed.
That's exactly what I mentioned to Council President. We're going to go to HSD inflationary adjustment right after this.
Great. Thank you.
Moving on, then, if I might, to the notification process for buildings with five or more units. So, that first statement of, thank you, that first statement of interest for that type of building would not be due until 30 days after the owner had issued the notice of intent to sell. And this is, again, in recognition that these are, in fact, typically larger buildings, the due diligence, the financial need to kind of pull resources together is a little more complex. And so, this is actually in alignment with what we heard from the industry about how long these buildings can take as well to actually move through the process of a sale. So, that first statement of interest would be due 30 days after the notice is issued. The next tier would be another 15 days. If there was a tenant or tenant group that was interested in purchasing, they would have to, in fact, show their financial ability at that next 15-day period. And then, finally, a submittal of an offer would be due 90 days after that first 30 days, when the statement of interest was issued by the owner and by the interested party.
Chair, would you like to talk about some of the conversations that you and I have had with the industry, with folks that sell commercial real estate? I know that initially, when I had asked about 120 days, what kind of an impact that would have, that it was a major concern, but then I think that some things have been ironed out. Love to have you bring that up.
Would you like to elaborate more, and I'll add to that?
Well, I will also say that I really want to appreciate and say thank you to your support for the First Amendment, because that was one that, there was a lot of concern among smaller owners, that if they couldn't sell when they were prepared to, that that could put them, you know, in a problem with the market. So, I think the fact that we have reached a compromise with 15 days' notice and another 15 days, where a tenant or tenant group can demonstrate their financial abilities, is, I think that that's a compromise, at least from what I've heard from the seller's representatives that they can live with. So, I thank you for that. So, I don't want to really dive in too deeply, but I think with this idea about the 120 days in the commercial market before a final decision can be made to whom they're going to make an award, I just would like to have further conversation about that. And I know, maybe, Emily, you've got something you could weigh in on as well.
Did you have a comment? Okay. So, I will add to that. I think what we've heard about the existing ordinance, and remember, you all passed this with Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Burgess originally, which was focused on that last column for units of five or more. What we heard in conversations with many of the nonprofit developers is that the existing 60-day requirement was just not enough time to do exactly what you talked about a few moments ago, which was to confirm that they had the leveraging funds, that they had the matching funds, that they had all of the ability to make a competitive offer, and they asked for a little bit additional time. So, what we've done here is basically say, if you are interested, if you've raised your hand and said, "Yes, we're interested," then you have 90 days to act to get your offer together and submitted. This really also, I think, in some ways, frees up some of the sellers at an earlier point. If any of the nonprofit developers are not interested in the purchase of a unit with, or a building with five or more units, they actually give notification much earlier now, and the seller gets relieved of the need to hold on to the building. So, in some ways, it's a little bit of an ask for a longer time for the nonprofit developers if the potential purchaser is interested. But it's also a little bit of a relief to put an item back onto the market if there is no one who steps forward and asks for it. And right now, we know that there's a concern that people are being asked to hold on to property when there's not going to actually be a nonprofit developer who comes forward. This gives them more relief, and, you know, I'm putting this from the perspective of a seller, that they can then put their item back on the market. So, in some ways, it's a little bit additional generous time for the potential purchaser. But if no one's interested, it's a lot more relief for the seller, and it's going to put those items back on the market faster.
So, in this case, with the size of a building, let's just say, we've got a five-unit building, if nobody steps up within the first 30 days, raises their hand and said, "I'm interested," then the remainder, it goes back on the market.
Correct.
We're not doing tier, we don't have the tier two and three here.
That's right.
Like, I think you just articulated it well. If nobody raises their hands, 30 days is a shorter period of time than under our current legislation, as is, and if somebody does raise their hand, then they have essentially 120 days from when the first statement of interest.
No, 90 days after, 90 days after the 30-day statement of interest.
So, it's a total of 120 days.
A total of 120 days, really, to do due diligence and to figure out, do they really want to buy the building, and can they get the resources to do so? I think that's true.
Yes. But it's only for those who are truly interested.
Right.
Yeah. Councilmember Herbl.
We'll figure out the math later.
Yeah, we're right.
I want to go back. I'm sorry. I know we're trying to move forward, but I have a question for Emily Alvarado, as it relates to the two-to-four unit properties, because we have a case study right now. The Duamish Valley Affordable Housing Coalition has identified a fourplex, and they're working with the Office of Housing, submitting an application for some bridge funding. And I guess my question would be, do we know whether or not the tenants in the building indicated their interest within 15 days of that building becoming, going on the market? And do we know if they then indicated a statement of interest within that timeframe? I think I'm screwing up the tiers, but you get what I'm saying. And will Office of Housing be able to respond to the application for bridge funding within 30 days? Is that realistic? Now, I'm not asking you whether or not you intend to award it, but is it possible that you could turn around an application for a bridge loan within 30 days of receiving a request? Because that's the standard that we're asking tenants or nonprofit to meet.
So, all good questions. I actually don't know the specifics about this property. As a reminder, under the current law, the smaller buildings do not have to provide notice, so they would not be covered under the existing law with a fourplex. And also, as a reminder for folks, we have...
Oh, yeah, this is happening absent the law's existence.
Exactly. Which is part of what I wanted to flag, is that, one, we, you know, we have a lot of noncompliance right now, so we don't have a lot of properties even who should provide notice, providing notice. So, as you consider this issue, part of the question is, what's the balancing in how we actually get compliance and get the outcomes that we're looking for? In this case, you have an example where a tenant nonprofit organization was able to identify an opportunity absent this law, and we do want to be able to support people who are able to build that good relationship with property owners, so that we can actually have the outcomes we're looking for. I think that it's possible for us to underwrite an acquisition loan in 30 days. I do believe, depending on the scale, our present acquisition loans are a revolving fund, so someone would put in an application, and we can consider that. We can't consider that if there's an increase in applications, however, right? So, the question is, how much of this is going to create an additional demand on both resources and staff capacity? If that's the case, then we have other considerations about how do we support this work administratively, because we do not have dedicated staff to be supporting this work at this time.
Councilmember Juarez, and then Council President Harrell.
I think Councilmember Herbl raises a really good point and a practical point. I think a lot of us in these policies, we all generally agree, there's nobody here or certainly no one on the second floor that doesn't agree that this isn't a good thing. But what I get concerned about is just common sense and practicality. I know you can't close a deal in 30 days. I just, that just doesn't happen. If it's never happened in my life in 30 years of doing stuff. But putting that aside, you get two or three people who want to buy the property, you're not going to close in 30 days. You're going to use up more resources, and so I want...
Close.
Not close, but I'm sorry, to get...
No. Submit an offer.
Okay. But to submit the offer, so when I get to the practicality of it, in your experience, have you done that, as of now, in real time?
I'll need to go back and check on what it looks like. You know, we are almost not closing any acquisition loans on properties of this size, and the size and scope of the property would...
Let me clarify something.
...change the way in which we're able to underwrite a deal.
Let me clarify something. There is a reason that there's a difference between the 90 days for a multifamily unit of five and more of being 90 days plus, because what we hear directly from the nonprofit developers, Seattle Housing Authority, Office of Housing, is that it is a longer period of time for those multifamily units. The reason we've actually shrunk the time to 30 days is precisely because, what you said, we have heard a difference between large units and smaller units. And what we heard from the sellers of two-, three-, and four-unit buildings is that they can close within 30 days. Their normal period for closing, not closing, sorry, to have an offer is within a 30-day period. Originally, I was saying, let's make it 90 days for these smaller units as well. And they were saying, you know, "I understand where you're trying to go with this, but two-, three-, and four-units are much different in terms of who's making an offer and how fast that happens."
Buyers who are waiting on getting funding approvals from the city of Seattle? That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about people who are waiting to get approved for a loan from the city of Seattle Office of Housing...
Oh, those folks...
...in order to submit documentation that they have the financial ability to purchase.
Those folks are more likely to be in the 90-day period.
Okay. That's the question I'm asking, because I'm asking about a fourplex that fits into this column.
So, I will get back to you on what it looks like to underwrite one of the smaller buildings and how long it takes to consider a loan application, just as an approximate. Get back to all of you. But again, to the extent that it's hypothesized that all of these deals come to fruition by virtue of our funding, that's really unrealistic, given our resources and given our staff capacity. And so, as we expand policies, we just want to consider the extent to which we can actually achieve the outcome.
Yeah, you're going to have to be balancing all of these different indications of interest. Yeah.
Okay.
A quick question.
Yes, please.
A quick one. On the notice of intent to sale, when a seller is triggering that process, can the seller still list it and move forward without accepting anything and putting on, so it's almost just an internal process?
Wait, yeah.
They can't even list it until this is complied with?
Correct. That's correct.
So, what's the thought there? Why can't they, because the private market may trigger more inquiries and put the nonprofit at a disadvantage?
Because they, we want to give that moment of time for the nonprofits, the tenants' groups, the city, S.H.A., the opportunity to work with a seller to put an offering. Yeah. And that's true of our existing policy, yes, it's true of our existing policy as well, the 60 days. Yeah.
So I did pass out for the committee's reference, this brand-new report that folks probably saw us post all about on Monday. This is from the National League of Cities, and this is a report that talks about various strategies at the national and the local level for addressing the housing crisis. And I wanted to call out on pages 29 and 30, when, oops, I'm sorry, 23 and 24, when I was reading through the report, it really did highlight a strategy that we're talking about here, which is increasing the ability for people to come to agreement on preserving existing housing, existing multifamily structures. And then to Councilmember Bagshaw's point, then we need to do more to make sure that there's technical assistance, and I know that we're going to talk a little bit more about some potential amendments around that, but really helping to make sure people have the financing to come together. That's part of what the notice element is, especially for our tenants and for our nonprofit developers. So I thought this was an exciting piece to lift up, because I think it's a component of the overall strategy. And Seattle is highlighted in here. We got a chance to be a case study in their report, and really proud of all the work that Seattle has done, and then ways that we're incorporating what other cities have done as well around this notice legislation. Obviously, San Francisco and others have had something similar, but it gives us a chance to say that this is one additional item that's really a highly recommended best practice that we're putting forward. Do you want to talk, we have maybe about five more minutes?
Okay, I've got three more amendments. Those are going to go much quicker than this first one.
Okay.
Presuming that nobody has any more questions for the moment about amendment number one, and obviously, I can field more questions afterwards. So moving to amendment, amendment number two, it would actually request the city auditor in cooperation with the Office of Housing to evaluate the multifamily building owner's compliance with the notice requirements. It would request that the evaluation occur in approximately August 2021, or two years after adoption of the new requirements. The report that the auditor would do would be submitted to the city council by December 30th, 2021, and would include any kind of recommended policy changes. This is Councilmember Muscata's amendment. Okay. Moving on to amendment number three, this has to do with workshops to facilitate building sales. I think this gets a little bit at the technical assistance piece here. So this amendment would request the Office of Housing to facilitate workshops to discuss supporting sales of buildings to interested parties. Participants in the workshops would include tenant groups, nonprofit housing developers, community organizations, housing financiers, because there are other folks who actually provide acquisition funding. Housing Finance Commission is one such entity. There are others, realtors and brokers, and then owners of rental housing. And the purpose of these workshops would be for there, in fact, to be conversations about what is it, what would it take for a tenant or tenant group or organization to buy a building, whether it's a specific building that people have in mind, or just generally what the process might be to help facilitate those sales in a way that is beneficial to the tenants and organizations interested in buying, as well as to the sellers.
I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Bagshaw for the work on amendment number two with us. I think it was a really good idea to have a look back and an analysis of whether or not this tool is really helping, and so thank you for working with us on that amendment as well. Councilmember Herbl, I know you had some ideas around technical assistance and education to maybe enhance the amendment that we were talking about in item number three. Did you want to comment on some of that?
So why don't I go on to amendment number four, which is--
Oh, okay.
--Councilmember Herbl's amendment.
Sorry about that. They're complimentary.
They are complimentary, yes. So this amendment would request O.H. to develop strategies to monitor and enforce the ordinance, to make sure that compliance happens, and to provide a report to the city council by September 30th, 2019, that would include those strategies and the cost to implement those strategies. The second piece would request O.H. to convene an ongoing stakeholders group to create an inventory of potential buildings that could be sold, and to develop broader systems of resources to support tenant purchase of the buildings that might actually be up for sale.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
So I think in light of the language that I just referenced in the National League of Cities housing report, in the desire to make sure that there is technical assistance and education, and also in recognition with the Office of Housing that there is clearly additional resources that you all are still trying to grapple with, with existing outreach that you're doing, I would love to keep working with you on this. I think the way that we crafted it initially was to say that the Office of Housing would host convenings, and so maybe we can get a little bit more specific about what kind of convenings should include and the type of language and stuff, but if we can work with you over the next week or so on some of the language, I think there is a potential hybrid between amendments three and four, so that there's the robust education that we want, and that we're maybe not overly asking too much of O.H. I haven't had a chance to talk to Office of Housing yet, but I'm just going to flag that. Sounds good. Councilmember Bagshaw, and then Council President Harrell. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to respond to your question, despite your comments since it was related to my amendment. I just want to clarify that I agree that these are definitely complimentary, but amendment four, I think, does have a unique goal from amendment three, although those goals are, again, they're complimentary. This is about creating a group that works to identify and monitor buildings that might be subject to this new law. So it's a monitoring and enforcement role, whereas I think the workshops are about facilitating building sales, I think, once, with groups of tenants who are already interested in purchasing properties. So I think there's a way to kind of mix them together, but yeah.
Great, well, we'll keep working with you. Thank you for bringing that forward. Councilmember Bagshaw, and then Council President.
I want to thank you for your work with the National League of Cities. I know you were back in Washington this week when this was presented. There's some really good things in here, and I know that in the mayor's office, we're looking at increasing ways that we can make more housing affordable on a big scale and a big jump, and I'm just looking through here and seeing that there are a lot of things that have been identified that the City of Seattle is either doing now or will be doing. So I just, I think this report is great. Appreciate all of your help on this and your leadership in this area.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Council President.
Yeah, first of all, just a comment and question. The comment is, I really am pleased with the way the package is coming together, both with the amendments and with some collaboration, that it's coming together nicely for the benefits of, basically trying to fight for affordable housing. My question is, it seems like at the end of the day, that the seller, whether it's a two, or four, or five-plus unit, their goal generally is to maximize the sale. And at the end of the day, if we're, particularly if we're trying to preserve affordable housing for tenants or nonprofit organizations that may be able to step in, it's just going to be a question of money. And my question in housing is, much like the equitable development initiative and the other sort of dedicated revenue sources toward preserving affordable housing, you all just have your general fund. You don't have a dedicated source. I mean, can we just, quite candidly, just match, supplement the purchase price if it comes to that for these small consortiums coming in? Do we have a pot of money for that? Because I think at the end of the day, they can get together all they want, they could set up a real estate investment trust, or an LLC, or a corporation and compete, but can they compete still against a stronger buyer? And if we try to, if that's our intent, at the end of the day, it also just might be a question of money. So I'm wondering if we, as we evaluate this, whether we just have to get your department more money to be able to intervene, so to speak, and whether that would be a tool. And I'm not even sure legally whether we can do that, quite candidly. So, because you don't have a dedicated source for this, right? You're just tapping into your budget.
Well, we have the housing levy preservation--
The housing levy, yeah, yes, correct.
So the money should come from the housing levy? Is that where, and how much, how much do we have in there?
So the housing levy capital portion is about $210 million over seven years for the purposes of rental housing production. And in the event that the acquisition program, which is short-term money, was then needed to stay in the project permanently as permanent financing, it would be competing against all of the other projects that are seeking funding, including new construction, of which we have a significant intent to apply list. So we do not have a specific pot of money specifically for preservation, although preservation is certainly an allowable use of our existing housing levy capital funds.
So we need to move on, folks. I will flag, we want to appreciate the mayor has a real interest in preservation as well. That's part of, I think, what she's talking to folks about, and I know you guys, you and the mayor just did a release recently about preserving affordable units as well. So we're going to get back to you, Council President. I want to also make sure that folks know that none of the money in this, in the Office of Housing would be used to specifically purchase these units. This is making a notice available for nonprofit developers and tenants to potentially purchase these properties. So we're not asking O.H. to use your own money. You could, Seattle Housing Authority could, and if there was a great opportunity, we would love for you to do that, but that's not what we're asking for in this legislation. This is about notifying both nonprofits and tenants, and we've included our friends, yeah.
I understand that, but a notice without resources and funding is meaningless, quite candidly. So it's got to fit into, notice is fine, but if this doesn't result in actual saving and preservation, I think you can't have one discussion without the other.
That's correct, and I think we do have language in there that talks about looking back to make sure that this works. We have language that Councilmember Herbl and I are working on in terms of educating and getting the word out, and we've heard from the Office of Housing, the concept of having these convenings and workshops for folks is something that they've already talked about doing, that they've held convenings in the past and will continue to do so. So we are going to move on to item number two. Okay, go ahead. One more question, go ahead.
Don't we have a revolving loan fund that is throughout the year for acquisitions like this, outside of the regular NOFA process?
Yes. Exactly. We have a $30 million revolving acquisition and preservation fund. However, a reminder that those loans need to be returned within three to five years because the funding is actually otherwise used for long-term operation and maintenance. So it's not its own standalone--
Bridge money.
--bucket that can be depleted. It's bridge money, and that's why, to the extent that it implicates permanent financing, it is just competing against the broader bucket.
Right. So people are likely, like, they might get the bridge funding, but then they're going to apply in the regular annual--
Most cases, they both need their bridge funding, and then they need it to be permanent funding.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay, so we will take all of your questions. If folks have questions, why don't we do a deadline on Monday? That way, we can turn around some questions for our conversation next Thursday. So do let us know, and I think we have a handful of questions that we'll be getting back to you all on today. I want to thank you again for working with us on those two amendments, Councilmember Bagshaw and Councilmember Herbl. Look forward to working with you on yours as well. Okay, great. Fuddi Day, why don't you go ahead and read into the agenda, item number five? And we're going to skip three and four right now, and we are going to move to item number five, which is the human service providers' inflationary adjustment. And Councilmember O'Brien, thank you so much for joining us here. I know you came from PSRC, and this is an issue that you've been working on for a long time, so excited that you could join us today. Amy Gore, thanks for being here with us at the table.
Agenda item number five, Council Bill 119542, an ordinance relating to contracting by the Human Services Department for briefing and discussion and possible vote.
Excellent. Amy, you want to introduce yourself, and then I'll say a few words?
My name is Amy Gore with Council Central Staff.
Wonderful. So thanks, everybody, for being here. I want to take a few seconds to see if Councilmember O'Brien, if you wanted to say anything, I knew you've been working on this for a while?
No.
Oh, later.
Okay. And Councilmember Herbl and I had the chance to join a number of the human service provider organizations this morning. Hello, everybody, thank you for still being here. We are very excited to be considering amendments to the human service provider inflationary adjustment legislation, and very excited to be bringing this forward. Thanks to our chair, Councilmember Bagshaw, for helping to include a big priority last year for us, was making sure that both general fund and non-general fund contracts got a 2% inflationary adjustment. That was definitely a win for many of the organizations that have been asking for an inflationary adjustment over the years. We also know that in every year, there's an increase. Most years see an increase in the CPI, and we have included in other policies and other public policies that when there's an increase in the cost of living, that wages and payment should also increase. That's what we've done with the minimum wage at the state level, and frankly, that's what we do with our own workers every year as we think about the cost of living increases. These are organizations that provide some of the most critical functions to our city. We're talking about prevention of domestic violence. We're talking about assistance for seniors at senior centers and food banks, community health clinics, and making sure that people have sexual assault prevention and response efforts fully funded, and making sure that there's meal programs served and that homeless shelters stay open. And what we heard from the providers over the last six months or so has been said better than any of us could. The importance of having stability at those organizations cannot be understated. We heard folks talking about, overstated. We heard folks talk about 40% to 50% turnover rates, having case managers not be able to be on-site for longer than 12 months because of the turnover being so high, and we heard directly from those who receive services, people who are youth, seniors, folks who are exiting housing, saying that the most important element for them with getting stabilized was access to a stable case manager, and they name their case managers by name. If we don't have the ability to stabilize these organizations, they're not going to have those case managers. And this is truly, I think, the backbone of what helps to, the backbone of the services that help to make sure that our organizations are funded. When we saw the charts from some of the organizations about why the cost of living is increasing, it's not just labor increases that they have. They have the need to make sure that they're paying city light, that they're paying water, that they're paying rent. All of the costs of housing continue, or costs of operations continue to go up. So I know that this is an issue that we all are passionate about. Many of you have grappled with this for years. What I'm hoping that we can do is walk through some of the amendments that were included in the legislation, and to talk about the very reasonable approach of making sure that inflationary adjustment is tied to CPI. That means that in certain years, you're not going to have an inflation adjustment because CPI will remain stagnant, just like we've done at the state level with minimum wage. When there's not a CPI increase, the minimum wage doesn't go up. So we also recognize that we have to work within the budget confines that our good budget chair has reminded us of, and we also recognize that especially in those downturn years, it's important for us to have stable funding for these organizations, because there's going to be more people who need food banks and assistance and are dealing with moments of crisis, especially when we have economic downturns. So to keep those organizations stable throughout this time is really critical, and I hope, I hope that we have hit the right balance here with our council colleagues. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Amy to walk us through the amendments and to have some questions and comments from folks here.
Okay. Today, I'm here for the second discussion of Council Bill 119542, which is sponsored by Councilmember Muscata. Our first discussion of this council bill was at the June 13th meeting of this committee. As you recall, this legislation would amend the Seattle Municipal Code to require that the Human Services Department include annual inflation adjustments for renewed or negotiated contracts. I did want to mention that there were several questions at the June 13th meeting, which I responded to in a memo dated June 24th and circulated to council members. That memo provided answers to questions about comparison between inflationary indices, methods for calculating inflationary adjustments, provided some measures of increased operating costs, as well as provided new estimates for budgetary impacts of this legislation. And the memo is available online at the Clerk's website as part of the CB 119542 record. In addition, the summary and fiscal note is being updated to reflect the budgetary estimates. Do we want a brief reminder of the bill?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Currently, HSD funds services through a competitive process that awards funding to organizations for multiple years, usually for four years.
Have some interpreters here.
Oh, shall I speak more slowly a little bit? Okay. Though the award is for multiple years, funds are dispersed through successive, single-year contracts, and each year of the award, the contract is renegotiated or renewed. Increases in contract amounts or changes to scope can be made during the awards process or during contract renegotiations, but are not required during either the award process or the contract renegotiations. Over the past several years, the city has included an inflationary adjustment in the adopted budget to apply to HSD contracts. From 2014 to 2018, the budget included an inflationary adjustment ranging from 6%, I'm sorry, 0.6% to 2.3% to be applied only to general fund contracts. The 2019 and 2020 mayor's budget proposal also included a 2% inflationary adjustment for general fund contracts. Council amended the budget to apply a 2% increase to non-general fund contracts in 2019 at a cost of $903,000. Council added the same amount to the 2020 endorsed budget to maintain the 2019 increase, but did not fund an additional increase for 2020 non-general fund contracts. Council Bill 119542 would amend the Seattle Municipal Code to require that HSD contracts, both those funded by general fund and non-general fund sources, include an annual inflation adjustment when renewed or renegotiated. The bill would apply to contracts issued under the authority granted to HSD in the Seattle Municipal Code with four exceptions. It would not apply when the city is solely acting as a pass-through agency for services that are not provided in the city limits. not provided in the city limits. It would not apply when the contract is solely supported by state Medicaid funds or by funds appropriated by Title 19 of the Social Securities Act. It would not apply when the services are provided by a consultant, as defined by the SMC, and it is, and it would not apply if it is explicitly prohibited or otherwise incompatible with requirements of the funding source. The proposed bill states that the annual adjustment will be based on the change in the Seattle Tacoma Bellevue Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, which we refer to as CPIW. The proposal is currently agnostic about how exactly the CPIW would be used to calculate the annual adjustment. If the annual adjustment for CPIW is negative, the annual inflation adjustment for the contracts would be 0%. Council Bill 119542 requires that new awards consider previous contracts when determining what would be an accurate and fair assessment of the cost to fulfill the new contract. Additionally, Section 2 of the proposed council bill makes a technical code correction requested by law to clarify that HSD contracting is governed by Section 3.2 of the SMC rather than Section 20.60, which governs city contracts granted and administered by FAS, by Finance and Administrative Services. The current code is contradictory, and this change would clarify the code and make sure that it reflects current practice. I was going to discuss briefly budgetary impacts. As discussed previously, the 2020 endorsed budget includes an additional 2% contract increase for general fund contracts and maintains the 2019 2% increase for non-general fund contracts. Because there were more contracts awarded in 2019 than expected, the cost of a 2% increase for both general fund and non-general fund sources is now estimated to be $758,000. The June 24 memo also presents budgetary impacts for 2020 based on the more recent CPIW data, which we estimate to be 2.9% based on the 12-month average from April 2018 to April 2019. To fund a 2.9% increase for general fund and non-general fund contracts in 2020 would require an additional 1.9 million than what is currently in the 2020 endorsed budget for contract adjustments. As we discussed previously, there's an underspend of about $270,000 from the 2019 adjustment for non-general fund contracts, which could be applied to a 2020 contract increase. If applied to a 2020 increase of 2.9%, that would reduce the shortfall to about $1.6 million, 1.7 million. I also want to note that these increases reflect only the cost increase for existing services, and if council wants an increase in services provided, that would not be reflected in these budget estimates.
Amy, quickly, can you say that last sentence again?
Sure.
It only covers costs to...
It would only cover the increased cost of providing existing services. And that was what I wanted to say about the proposed council bill. Are there any questions about that?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Bagshaw.
I was just going to say, in one of your opening paragraphs, I think you said something about the, at renegotiation time, that we could add in a 2% or whatever the CPI or whatever the other percentage we might want to add. What happens between now and negotiations for a particular contract under this proposed legislation?
Under this proposed legislation, let's say an award occurs during this year. They would enter into a contract for 2020 at a particular amount, let's say $100,000. Next year, during the budget process, we would look at what the CPI increase was, what the general fund increase was, and there will be a director's rule that says our renegotiated contracts will need to be increased by X%. Let's say, again, we've been talking about 2.9%. So if the budget funds are appropriated to cover that, then in the next year's renegotiation of their contract, the contract amount would go up by 2.9%. Does that answer your question?
So between now and the time of renegotiation, there would be the 2.9%, and when you get to renegotiation, depending upon what the funding, what the general fund pot is or whatever grants we might have, then there would be decisions made whether to renegotiate a new contract or whether that entity, if we didn't have sufficient funds, whether a contract would be issued at all to that entity.
Exactly. Again, this is a requirement for HSD in their contract renegotiations and would need to be funded appropriately. If there was a year, for whatever reason, that that was not funded, then HSD would need to make decisions about either reducing the scope of their contracts or reducing the number of the contracts.
So I want to first thank Councilmember Swant for joining us. Thank you. And I know you were here in the evening when we had the presentation as well and another, a number of other committee meetings. So thank you for joining us today. Again, just a reminder for folks, I think in our previous conversation, when we were talking about the amount that the increase was in our last year's budget, I think it was 0.7% of the overall budget. Do you have that stat in your memory? I was just looking through my notes.
I believe that is correct. I can double-check, but I believe that's correct.
I just wanted to remind folks of the magnitude of the amount that we're talking about in relation to the overall budget. I know that it's important for us to be fiscally wise and that you, Councilmember Bagshaw, as Chair of the Budget Committee right now, have reminded us, we do, we do need to be fiscally wise as we think about these investments. When we're talking about, for example, last year with a 2% increase, the increase over the amount that was currently being proposed was 0.7%. And thinking about, well, if that was for 2%, and then we're talking about maybe 3% or 3.5% in future years, recognizing that the CPI is not always going to go up, sometimes it's going to be smaller, we, I think, have an opportunity for us to make an important investment into the Human Service Provider organizations, the workers, the services that they provide, especially at those moments of crisis when downturns are happening and people need additional assistance. So I just wanted to remind folks of the amount of funding that we're talking about because 3% can sound, or 3.5% can sound like a potentially large number, but in retro, in the perspective of the overall budget is relatively small, and the impact that will have on organizations like Youth Care and Solid Ground and DSC and others that we heard from today is going to be very critical for the stabilization of those organizations. So I just thought that was an important statistic that we shared at the last meeting that I wanted to elevate. Additional comments? Councilmember, Council President here.
Thanks, Chair. Just a sort of question on how it sort of plays out. What assurances that any increase in the contract goes directly to the employees? How do we monitor that as opposed to just going into the organization?
Sure. Well, in this particular bill, it doesn't have a requirement about how those funds are used, so it leaves it up to the organization whether it needs to cover an increase in rent or an increase in utility bills. There is a reporting back mechanism proposed in one of the amendments that would require a report back to say how the, how the money was used.
So in, I think it's SPU, I believe, that in some of our contracts for recycling, when there were RFPs established, I think, I don't want to misstate the situation, but I think there were specific references to the wages paid to the employees, I believe. And it gave the competitors of the RFP an indication of what kinds of wages we pretty much demanded, if you will, through an RFP, be paid to the employees. And particularly, many of these employees were very diverse, working in some of the, I toured some of the places, and so that was our way of trying to protect the employees' rights. Is it just our policy not to go that granular to say, okay, we're going to increase it. I'm all for that. I'm all for making sure there's, we're close to a living wage for these jobs, but I'm a little reluctant to just, I mean, it could just go to the light bill. I guess it all, they all need the resources, but, but I thought the thrust of this is to help the employees, which I fully support. So is it just our decision, or maybe the legislation's just designed not to be that granular?
The legislation does not have any requirements about how the money is used.
So as a reminder, for last year, we included a report back to us on how those dollars are being used. The human service organizations are currently in the process of collecting that information with HSD, and they will be submitting that. We'll have a better understanding of how that 2% was applied for last year. Going forward, though, you're right, we don't specifically say it has to go for X% increase in wages, precisely because we saw that PowerPoint presentation, which I'm hoping we can pull up if it's available on our amazing device here, and we'll get that sent to you. It was a PowerPoint that showed where the cost of increase had occurred, I believe from Youth Care, that showed rent, utilities, and all of the issues in addition to wages. And it's, I think, important for us to recognize many of these organizations are also making impossible decisions about where to make the cuts when they don't get an inflationary adjustment, because really, the only thing that is flexible in that scenario is wages for workers. They really can't cut or make adjustments to their rent or city light or water, and so they're ending up taking it out of the actual workers who provide the direct service. So for us, I think it's important to recognize, we want these workers to be made whole, and as we stabilize the organizations, the workers then are not the first item on the chopping block.
Why wouldn't we just require that in the legislation?
Require.
Require that the funds go to the employees.
Well, because, here's, here's a good example. So when you look at the cost increase from 2015 to 2018, what we see is that the highest increases were in electric utilities and water and sewer services. We're also talking about internet and the cost of rent, right? So it's not just that the worker needs the money, but when we say to them, you have to put the money directly into wages, which is where we want the money to go as well, they don't have the option then of saying, I'm going to just not pay my water or utility bill. But I think it's a really important underscoring of where we do hope the dollars go so that we can stabilize organizations. Councilmember O'Brien and Councilmember Herblin, I think you were looking like you wanted to say something, too.
Yeah. Council President, I appreciate the questioning, and I know that, as I've worked on this over the years, the conversation's largely been driven around wages for the workers. And so I think that, I agree with the point I think you're trying to make. And what I've also heard, as I've dug in, is over time, without these inflationary adjustments, what has happened is that, as Councilmember Muscata was saying, is they take their finite amount of resources, and they have to pay more for utilities. They have to pay more for electric. And so what is left to squeeze out of that often ends up being the wages. So when they don't have money for paying the increase in electric rates or paying the increase in rent, that falls on the backs of the workers. And so I think it's important that when we add this inflationary adjustment, we're, we're doing it driven largely by our attention to these workers, but if we don't provide some resources to pay additional rent or utilities or whatever their other costs are that are also going up, that will ultimately fall on the workers, too. And so I think, you know, in my conversation with folks in the, in the room here and throughout the community, their commitment is as much or greater than ours to their workers. I think that, as Councilmember Muscata said, it's going to be important for us as we go forward to figure out how we track this and measure this. At the same time, we have lots of tracking and measuring mechanisms for all the people who get contracts, and I'm not looking for hiring another FTE to report back to us on this, but I do hope that the Human Service Department can help us understand what's going on and figure out what the right kind of dashboard is with existing data, if there's a few other pieces we need going forward. Because, you know, these are nonprofit organizations, so if the money just goes into the organization, it doesn't like go into someone's corporate jet. It's going to something that meets their services. We're going to want to make sure that they're being, you know, prudent with their, how they're investing their money, and so we want to see that.
So quite candid, I probably represented 50 nonprofits as a lawyer, so I'm quite, I'm very experienced in the mechanics and the governance of a nonprofit. What's driving my support of this legislation is the employee piece. And I was actually thinking, and we don't have, we're not going to have the bandwidth to look at what other things we can do for the nonprofits, whether it's utility discounts or some kind of special rate for these kinds of organizations. We're trying to just increase the money that goes into general, I just get that. That was just, what seems to be driving both the public testimony and the needs were the employees themselves. And I was, one, that was my primary concern in the legislation is just how we, you take a large, I don't want to name an organization, but a very large nonprofit that will be a beneficiary of this, that my fear is that none of it is realized by the employees, none of it. And it will go toward these fixed costs that are, that are expensive. I get that. Yeah.
I was going to just make the point that Councilmember O'Brien made, and I know he made it much more eloquently than I. This, this, these funds are supposed to provide for the cost of living adjustments across all of the costs associated with running a nonprofit. But I'd also just like to say, to the extent that, you mentioned large nonprofits, to the extent that some of them may be, their workers are a represented workforce, I think we can count on the unions in their negotiations with their, with their management using these funds for, for addressing wages.
And I'll, thank you for making that point. I'll also say, for our organizations that also don't have union representation, we've heard from some of their executive directors. We've heard from the folks who are managing these organizations that they really need this assistance because without it, they are having to not hire. They're experiencing 40% to 50% turnover rates because they have to pay their rent and utilities and the additional cost of operating business has continued to increase. They're the ones who are saying to us, if we don't have this stabilization to at least recognize the cost of inflation, then they're making these really tough decisions to not fill positions or to cut, to cut workers. And that's, I think, directly to your concern. They are making, as the leaders of those organizations, decisions that do implicate the workers, and we need to help stabilize them so that they're not in that impossible decision. I appreciate you bringing that up because ultimately, the dollars will go to workers when we stabilize folks. Amy, I'm going to ask you to walk us through the amendments, because I think we have three for possible consideration today, if that sounds good to folks. And I recognize that we have hard stops at noon, and so there's many more conversations on the hotel legislation. If we don't get that to that today, we can always combine it with our, with our conversations coming up, if that sounds okay to our committee colleagues.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of the July 9 memo with the amendments attached to it? Okay. So the first proposed amendment is sponsored by Councilmember Muscata, excuse me, Councilmember Muscata and Councilmember Bagshaw. As I mentioned, the council bill, as currently written, is somewhat agnostic about the way that the CPIW will be converted into an inflationary adjustment. There are a few ways of doing that. I distributed a memo with some examples of how that could be done. This memo does a, it specifies that the calculation will be a year-over-year change in the CPIW 12-month average for April in 2019 and for June and following years. The reason why we made it the 12-month average change is because that is how we do our Seattle minimum wage. It, it moderates some of the fluctuations a little bit while still representing changes in cost. The reason why it would be April for this year and June for following years is because April was the data that we had when we did the budgetary impacts, and we didn't want to confuse the issue by having a brand-new number yesterday for budgetary impacts if we moved to the June, but then to move into June and following years so that we have the most recent data available as the budget is being formulated. Any comments, or does anybody want to speak?
Just want to repeat that for the cameras. Councilmember Morris says, "Good job, Amy." I like that. Great.
Would anybody like to move the amendment or?
You want, you want us to go ahead and do that? Okay. I'm sorry, guys. I was waiting for all of them together.
We could go through all three of them and then...
No, that's okay.
I would suggest, let's, let's do one up side. Let's do this one.
Okay. I don't have a script for one at a time, but I'm going to do this on the fly because I know I can do this.
Yes.
I would like to move Council Bill 1, I'm sorry, move Amendment Number 1 to Council Bill 119542.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Amendment 1 to Council Bill 119542? Okay, great. Looks unanimous. Nobody opposed? Okay. Thank you for your assistance, colleagues. That amendment has been adopted.
Okay. Amendment 2 is sponsored by Councilmember Bagshaw. As we, as I mentioned earlier, the current council, the proposed council bill includes a minimum adjustment of 0% so that if CPIW is negative, there would not be a decrease in the contract amounts. This amendment would add a maximum adjustment, which would be equal to the change in the general fund resources over the previous year, so that the contract adjustments would be proportionate to the change in budget resources available. Is there, would you like to speak to that?
Please, go ahead.
Absolutely. So this amendment is coming from your cranky Budget Chair, and I, of course, have talked with Paul and Melinda and Nicole and Flo and half the people in this room about this. So... So I don't want you to think that, at the end of the day, that I think what we're doing is a bad idea. We've got to get there. My recommendation here, similar to the debate that we had with the sweetened beverage tax yesterday, is to give the council sufficient flexibility to make decisions when we have to make tough decisions. And in this case, what this amendment would do is to say if the general, if our general fund did not have sufficient monies proportionate to what we are trying to do, that we would actually look and take the CPIW, consider what the general fund is, and then make our decisions so that we were not overspending in this particular category. Now, that said, the council can always add. So it's not something that would preclude us from increasing if that was the highest priority for the year. But I am concerned that, as we are looking at general fund expenses, as we are making tough decisions, like what we did yesterday, again, with the sweetened beverage tax, what we are trying to do, there isn't a single one of us at this table that doesn't agree with the priorities. But I am arguing to give ourselves flexibility, both for the fairness to all of the nonprofits who have the contracts, but also that we are fiscally responsible in relationship to the other budget resources and choices we'll have to make, and again, to give priorities to future councils.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bagshaw. For this discussion, could you scroll up to Chart 1 for us? And I see Councilmember Juarez in the queue. I will just say that there's a few things I want to underscore. One is, I really appreciate working with you, Councilmember Bagshaw, and the efforts that you have brought forward to make sure that we are working within the budget confines that we have. In fact, I think it's really critical that we recognize that not every year, the CPI is going to increase, so we know that there's not going to always be potentially an impact on the budget. I was interested in trying to find that sweet spot with you on this amendment. And really, I think the thing that has encouraged me or convinced me that I'm not able to support this amendment at this time is the fact that we know that, especially during those toughest times, when our general fund does decrease, or, I'm sorry, doesn't have as much of an increase, that's exactly when we need these folks to be able to do their job, to help those who are potentially on the cusp of becoming homeless, or actually experiencing homelessness, or have other crises due to economic circumstances, such as potential for increased abuse, domestic violence abuse, and other types. And that's when we need folks to be able to be in community, helping the most vulnerable. The other argument that I would put out there for our council colleagues respectfully is there is situations in which our general fund amount could potentially change, sometimes due to arbitrary decisions. And I had the opportunity to sort of think through this a little bit more, in thinking through the sort of regressive nature of the funding that comes into our tax fund. Councilmember O'Brien, you've mentioned, you know, in past, we don't ever know what's going to happen, for example, with our sugary sweetened beverage tax, or the tax on rental units, the short-term rental units. And that decision in the future could potentially affect our budget as a whole, and I wouldn't want the folks who are our human service providers to be affected by a future council's decision to change sort of arbitrarily or not related, there's no tangent to these workers, and have that affect their amount of the contract increase. So for those two reasons, both the need to make sure that we're keeping these workers whole, especially in downturns, and to make sure that the organizations are not arbitrarily affected by policy decisions that don't have anything to do with them, I am unfortunately not able to support this amendment today, but appreciate you bringing it up. Other colleagues? Councilmember Juarez, and then Councilmember Sawant?
I have a few follow-up questions, and what my concern is, so this, I support Councilmember Bagshaw's amendment, and I'll tell you why, but I do have some follow-up questions for you, Madam Chair. So what we're trying to do, and we all agree about building in a 2.9% increase for our HSD workers, and I think we've got to be very careful with our language here. Using the language that we're keeping our workers whole makes the assumption that somehow we're at fault for taking it away, and we're not. What we're looking at are basic economics about how we can do and address and pay people their need and their worths, particularly in light of our homelessness crisis, and that we need to retain and stabilize organizations and employees. That being said, I think everybody here agrees that, yes, in a perfect world, it would be great to build in a 2.9 increase. What my concern is, is how are we always going to protect that line item in the future if the general fund can't provide for that? So that means we're going to take money from other places. And so what, I had one question that, if I can, Madam Chair, to direct to Councilmember Bagshaw. How does this give the council flexibility, this council and future councils, when we have to deal with when we had, like, our recession in 2008? And also, how does this impact other organizations or other groups that have contracts beyond HSD with the city of Seattle, that they don't get a 2.9% raise that is built in and protected? I see some equal protection and some issues here that, quite fairly, I think are unfair. I'm not taking away from the fact that there should be, and we should honor and pay HSD workers and those contract workers what they deserve, and I don't think that this is what that debate is about. What I'm concerned about is making promises and expectations about a pot of money that we don't always know how much is going to be there.
So just to clarify before Councilmember Bagshaw answers the question, and please, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, this is an inflationary adjustment tied to CPI for the year. So as you see on the chart up there, CPIW fluctuates each year. That will be what is our driver for how much each contract would get that year. So it's not always going to be 2.9%, especially if it goes down in certain years. So that's, I think that's an important point to make. And as you can see up there, there's many years in which our CPIW is much lower than the increase in the total budget that we have available. I'll leave it to Councilmember Bagshaw to talk about recession years, but I'll also just make this note, we don't ask that question when it comes to our current contracts that we have at the city, and we, every opportunity we can, we offer an inflationary adjustment. We don't talk about, you know, if there's a certain pool, or where the funding comes from potentially for that. We make that decision, because those are, that's, you know, the fabric of what helps provide our services. So I'm just saying, I agree with you when it comes to making sure that our workers at the city are whole. We've intentionally contracted with the folks who have the most trusted relationships and the expertise on the ground to do this work, and so we're trying to level that, we're trying to equalize how we treat both contracted provider organizations and those in the city, because I don't think we ask that question during those recession years.
Can I follow up with the chair? So since, in full being transparent, so what do we do when other groups that have contracts with the city that don't work at HSD feel that they want a 2.9%, that they're providing good services, and as you say, they're not being made whole, then how are we going to address that next wave if we set this precedent?
Amy, if you have comments on other contracts, I think that's important. The reason that we're, important to hear, the reason that we're specifically talking about these contracts, it's not like we're talking about contracts for folks who are keeping our windows clean, for example. We're talking about contracts for folks who are providing the services to our very, very most vulnerable folks.
I understand.
So it is less of a, yeah, it's less of a precedent, and more of a value statement that we haven't been able to do this. Councilmember Bagshaw, did you have some additional answers?
Well, I don't have much more to add to this. I'm just looking at this from, again, that very tight fiscal responsibility to provide us the breadth that we may need to make some tough decisions. Yesterday, with our sweetened beverage tax as an example, what we decided to do, and I must say that I really concur with the analysis both Councilmember O'Brien, Council President Harrell articulated very well, is that we went to the voters with some very specific things we were going to invest in. Then last year, we decided to take a certain percentage of that money and put it into the Nurse Family Partnership, some children's programs, even some food banks, that we felt were very, very important to be funded. That was money that was available, that could be supplanted by the general fund. The downside of that particular argument was that we had made promises to the communities that we were going to invest it differently. So I am happy to support that. But what happened is, is that then the general fund, we're going to have to go back and get general fund money to put back into these programs, like Nurse Family Partnership, and things that we also feel very strongly about. I am looking at this more from a standpoint of not tying council's hands, when there are other really wonderful competing things that we want to invest in. But that said, I mean, if you're lining up priorities, we want to invest in these nonprofits. We want to invest in these folks that are doing this incredible work. So I understand that we have competing values, but I would put forward to say, we still can do all that, but we just are giving ourselves and future councils some flexibility to say, we're going to have a maximum adjustment that's equal to the percentage change in the general fund. Strikes me as being strong, smart fiscal policy.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Sawant, and then Councilmember Herbl, and then Councilmember O'Brien, and we have, I think, one more amendment to consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskata. I wanted to, I had my remarks for this amendment, but before saying that, I wanted to say, just to re-insert the overall perspective that we are looking at before we look at the amendment, is we're talking about a context where there has been a chronic underfunding of human services, and that includes both the living standards of the workers in the sector, but also the services that they provide to the most vulnerable have been under assault chronically over many years, perhaps over decades. And offering an inflation adjustment to the workers in this sector is the bare minimum that the city of Seattle should be doing in order to address this problem. So we're not talking about lavish wage increases in any way whatsoever. We're talking about the bare minimum. And city council member and mayor salaries keep up with inflation, executive salaries go up yearly, but the salaries of the most underpaid workers aren't keeping up. And we're talking about the most underpaid workers, and we're talking about this cruel irony where the people who are serving the most underserved are also on the brink of becoming some of those underserved themselves, especially if you count in the cost of housing, the rents that many of the workers pay. Many of the workers are now being forced to commute long distances, because they can no longer afford to live in the city whose homeless people they're serving. So that's the context under which we are looking at this. And so I don't, I don't believe that the driving argument here should be, what should we do if general fund goes down? The reality is recessions happen on a regular basis under capitalism, and on a regular basis, the recession, the burden of the recessions is put on working people, and some of the most underpaid working people. Everybody remembers in the 2008, 2009 crash, who took the, you know, took on the burden of the crisis? It wasn't the big banks that caused the crisis. They were made whole through the bailout. The millionaires and billionaires, they maybe lost a few millions here and there, but they were not, you know, worried about whether they would be able to pay their rent. But city of Seattle workers took furloughs, you know, workers made sacrifices, in many cases willingly, because they believed that we are in this together. But at the end of the day, they weren't the ones, you know, when the economy recovered, they didn't get their share back either. So when the economy is doing well, again, the wealthiest benefit the most. When the economy doesn't do well, and there's a recession, the burden falls on the workers again. So we just cannot accept that, that is the, you know, that we cannot accept that status quo. And the other point, I think, that is really, really important here, as far as the argument about, how do we do this? If the general fund goes down, how do we make sure that the city council follows its ordinance? Well, tax big business, you know, raise the progressive revenue source of the city in order to make this viable, not continue to talk about robbing funds from one deserving program to another. I think the best way to do this is to tax big business. If not, then reduce executive salaries. I mean, there are some executives in the city that get nearly $300,000 of salary. I think there are executives who could have a living wage and yet make some sacrifices in order to make sure that these workers are paid. I mean, there are many legal mechanisms that we can do this in the budget, and I don't accept that this amendment is necessary in any way. I think the argument is based on the lowest-paid workers making the most sacrifices.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember...
Thank you. Two quick things to say. I would really love this if we could focus at four workers' salaries. My understanding is we aren't, and we can't. And based upon what I'm hearing at the table, I'm going to withdraw Amendment Number 2. I will be supporting this, but unfortunately, I have to pick up...
You've got five minutes.
I'm going to withdraw my amendment. I will support the underlying legislation when we vote up at the full dais, but I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Okay. Well, thank you for putting it forward. Thank you for allowing this conversation, and thank you for withdrawing it as well. We do have one more amendment, and I know folks may need to take off. I'd like to try to get through that one additional amendment, and then see if we can vote in the next five minutes.
Okay. Very quickly, Amendment 3 is sponsored by Councilmember Moskata, and it would add a report requirement in 2022 to include information about the impact of the required annual adjustments on both contracted partner organizations, including their financial stability and wages and services provided, and the city. And then also require a response from the council outlining their response to the report, and any additional next steps.
Wonder. So moved. It's been moved, Amendment Number 3 has been moved. Any additional comments? I will say thank you, because Councilmembers Bagshaw and both Council President Harrell have talked about the need for getting this data back. So thank you for raising this for us. No more comments. All those in favor of Amendment Number 3 to Council Bill 119542, please raise your hand. Aye. Nobody opposed. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bagshaw.
Before I leave, shall I hear one comment before you? I think we're almost ready to vote on the base legislation.
Yes, just go ahead, Mr. President.
But I still seem to be missing something, which wouldn't be the first time today. And that is, all of the arguments that I hear, again, particularly on this amendment that was withdrawn, goes to the same thing over and over. Employee wages, employee wages, employee wages. That's why we're doing this, we're tying it into the CWI, but that's not what this legislation does. It doesn't do that. And so I think what I'm missing is, again, why don't we tie it directly into the wages piece? Why don't we say specifically that the money goes to the wages? I understand the concept of fixed costs. I understand that what we are doing is sort of just saying to the, to the myriad of nonprofits, here's the increase, and we hope you do the right thing, as to saying, here's the increase, do the right thing. So between now and, well, I'll just let it rest of that, because all of the speechifying has to do with the employee wages, yet this legislation doesn't get to that. It's my opinion.
We have time until Monday, before Monday. Yes, and with the council's consideration, we can also potentially give it another week if folks are interested, so maybe we'll leave that open for discussion. Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw. Seeing no additional comments, I will also underscore, one of the things that I'm hoping that the folks who are in the audience can help us with is to help directly answer Council President Harrell's line of questioning. I think we've heard it before in previous committees about the importance of this inflationary adjustment across the board for organizations, knowing that the consequence is resulting in potential cuts or underfunding and understaffing in organizations. So I'm hoping that folks could come together and help us directly answer the question, will this help? Will this be a help to those wages? And to get that information out there more clearly. Council President Harrell, I have no problem with potentially holding this over for an extra week to make sure that we do get the chance to have that full discussion and get a chance to hear from folks, so happy to do that.
Not ask for that. I'll just talk to constituents and all of you, one-on-one, not a quorum, by the way, about your thoughts.
We will leave the door open, and if I don't have to say a date certain today, then maybe we can keep that open?
Certainly, absolutely.
Okay. I would love to just say thank you again for all of your work on this, and people have been working on this for years prior to me coming here. Thank you again, Councilmember O'Brien, for constantly bringing this up. When folks came to me a year ago to talk about this, they talked about the work that you had done on this, so please, if you have any closing comments.
I thank you, Councilmember Moskata, the work you've done in the last few months on this has been amazing. The work the community has done, really powerful meeting, I don't know, was that about a month ago, with so many folks here in the community? Providers in our community are doing some amazing work under really nearly impossible circumstances. And the workers that work for you all, or the workers that are here today, I know, are bearing the brunt of a really challenging situation. I've said it before, that we expect some of the lowest-paid people in our community to be doing the most essential and hardest, most complex work that there is in our society, and the work that we need more than anything right now. It's another example of how our economy is upside down. You know, I'm not taking anything away from programmers who make video games, but we should be paying our human service workers more than people who are making really awesome video games in our world, if we were to prioritize it the right way. And, you know, our economy is a big thing that we don't get to change, but this step, Councilmember Moskata, that you're leading on, is a huge step. I'll just say for the record that I did not support... I'll just say for the record that I did not support the amendment that Councilmember Bagshaw brought forward. I think her intention is very good. I think it's really complicated to try and prescribe when something kicks in and kicks out, and so... But the reality is, as we've seen in the past and we will likely see in the future, assuming this does pass, each budget, we will still be in the thick of things. A future council can decide to undo what we did or change it, and so it will hopefully set an expectation that we're not going to do that, except under extreme circumstances, but we'll need to continue to be vigilant. And this is just to keep people where they are based on where we are today, and we know the position that the organizations are in today is 10 or 20 years behind where they need to be. So, I know there's a lot more work that needs to be done, too, but it's an amazing first step, and I'm excited. Thanks for your work on this.
Before I move final passage, any additional questions or comments?
I just want to say that this is an important value statement. It's setting a bar, and I think it's actually an extension of what this council has done in conjunction with our human services providers and workers in past years during the recession, when we've, at the beginning of the budget process, said that our priority was no cuts to human services. This is taking this to that next step. So, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you, Councilmember O'Brien, for working so hard on this for so many years.
And just to be transparent, I will be asking Amy to prepare an amendment suggesting that the money goes toward the wages of employees. For discussion, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't at this point. If we're being asked, as a city, to prioritize the wages of people that are under earners or low-income earners even during bad times, why wouldn't the nonprofits still prioritize their workers during tough times as well? It seems to be that... And I'll be very candid with you. I just want to see the reactions to both the public and constituents and my colleagues, but I don't see a strong policy argument why we wouldn't require your nonprofits to pay their people.
I will say, I'm happy to explore that. I think when I took this piece of legislation on, it was a policy choice at that time to leave it open to how the money was being spent. So, at this point, I haven't done a lot of research into kind of legal or contractual issues around being that specific, and I need to do that research.
I understand. And I'd actually look at, again, what we did for some of the recycling contracts where we were very specific on the wages. We had wage specificity in the RFPs such that the responders were required to pay a certain wage. And again, I don't want to alarm any nonprofits that are saying, hey, that doesn't make good policies.
We might be giving workers a big raise if we do that if we replicate the prevailing wage requirements in a lot of those RFPs.
Well, I really appreciate your interest in making sure that the workers are...
That's what everyone's saying at the table. Pay them, pay them, pay them. Well, 2 points, just 2.9. That's not a big raise.
Council President, I want to say thank you for raising that and look forward to working with you over the next few days and happy to have your transparency on that issue so that we can look into that. I really appreciate you flagging that for us.
Can I share any points? So, is...
Well, yeah, the RFPs that...
How's that a bigger raise?
Well, because the RFPs that you're referring to, I think, require prevailing wages, which I don't think we're requiring...
What are you talking about? For the garbage?
Yeah. I don't think that's what we're requiring.
Oh, no. I was just saying... No, I see what you're saying. No, 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 no. I wasn't clear. I was saying that our ability to do that, just to look at how we did that in other RFPs, because I thought Amy had a question of whether we even can do that. I was saying, just look at those as an example. Those weren't high-paying jobs, by the way. In fact, if I may be candid with you, some of those are below minimum wage. As you may recall, that we were requiring some of our recyclers to pay below minimum wage, and I brought that issue up. It says, wait a minute, you're trying to drive down the costs of utility costs. I get that, but you're requiring our employees within the city to be below minimum wage. And so, we had to change that. That was several years ago. So, that's... So, those were not high-paying jobs by any stretch of the imagination. They were $14 an hour jobs.
Well, I'm happy to look into it and bring some information and options to everybody.
Excellent. Thank you, Council President, for the heads up on that. I think we are ready to vote. It's been years in the making, and I think we can do this today. We are only a few minutes over, so if the committee colleagues will entertain me, I would like to vote... I'd like to move Council Bill 119542 as amended with Amendment Number 1 and Amendment Number 3. It's been moved in second, and is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Council Bill 119542 as amended, please raise your hand.
Aye.
It is unanimous. All those opposed? None. It is unanimously passed. As we've discussed at the table, we will continue to assume that this will come up on Monday, July 15, and continue to work with folks to make sure that that schedule does work. We can always hold it over if needed, but I'm very excited to have this in front of us on Monday. And I just want to thank a few people: Allison, Hillary, Julia, Lauren, Nicole, Soshana, Evelyn, Jessie, Lindsay, Kelly, Erin, Flo, Jennifer, Rizwa, Corinne, Alexis, Amy Gore, and Jeff Sims of our central staff, Jessie from your staff, Councilmember O'Brien, as well as Leslie Mark O'Conna from Neighborhood Care, Katie and Nicole from MLK, Sagil Perik, if she's here, Chief of Staff, who's been working very closely to try to get this over the finish line, and our communications team. I didn't even have a chance to say everybody's organization, but we'll do that at final passage. I want to thank our council colleagues, Councilmembers Sawant, O'Brien, Juarez, Bagshaw, Herbold, and Council President Harold. You've been here since the very beginning of this meeting today, so I so appreciate it. Thank you.
You sound like, you know, the prescription drug commercial.
Yes. And apologize to our translators, because that was very fast. Thank you to the translators for being here today. We will hold over items Number 3 and 4, which are related to the hotel worker legislation. We have time on our agenda for next week to discuss those, and we also will get the Office of Labor Sandlers presentation in a future meeting. So, apologies to OLS for the delay on that. Very happy that you could be here again till the bitter and bittersweet end. Thank you.
Great job in sharing the meeting. A lot of complex issues.
Very complex.
Phenomenal job.